All right, we will open the February 15th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. We are recording this and it'll be posted online, but if anybody else is recording, that's fine. You just need to let us know. Okay, seven o'clock Town Planners Report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Let's see. Why don't we start off? We do receive a pair of requests for information. Following the last meeting, one from Mr. Sullivan on behalf of the Ranch Estates regarding correspondence from 2013. The developers, the Pinnacle Estates, our old farm. Regarding, seeing if any correspondence had indications related to broken future. Second, our pay was from Jesse Saltmarsh, looking for any record of landfill lease at 55 Hudson Drive. He's been by Sam West. And planning board did not have any records related to that use. That's from multiple, multiple. Some good news to share that we'll discuss when we get to the Plan Advisory Committee update. Select for recent write-up first refusal on the truck system when A four Port Loomis Street land belonging to Joan Torrello of three Georgia. To Board members for Any inclination to have one way or the other? I know, Mr. Phelps, you have an in-depth understanding of what called priority parties. I don't know if that list exists somewhere, but happily take that burden off your shoulders. They can tell a little further. Yeah. Jeff again, 426 North Loomis.
The only property was off of Logie Lane, which would be South Loomis. That was a priority for a new well.
Extremely damp property that is always really good for, hey, honestly.
For a west side water system.
It's right across from Honey Pot.
There.
That big, that big parcel right before the big curve. That's what we're talking about there on the right. It's good for him, man.
The one that's up now.
Yeah, 426.
North Loomis.
North Loomis.
It's not near.
It's right across the street from Honey Pot. It's a big wet field across the street.
Yeah.
Can't build on that.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, yeah. But that wasn't what we were. Our priority list. Yeah, I can't imagine that one. But John's gonna find that priority.
All right, so anybody on the board have any thoughts on 426 North Loomis as far as our recommendation about the right of first refusal?
Nothing. We're not interested.
Okay, so.
Whatever the motion has to be, right?
I don't think we have to do anything. You could certainly let the select board know that the board has no position on it.
Moving right along. Let's see, let's let's follow up for a moment. I know it's a under discussion item, but over here at Town Hall and over at the Police Department, an opportunity has arisen for us to establish the infrastructure for charging stations. So the Building and Grounds Department approached the Town Planner, that's a real, real far distance as we sit here right now, in order to explore this and identify if anything would fall into the planning board's review. In light of that discussion, that there's really no change in parking, right? The same amount of parking spaces exist before and after, two are technically reserved for that purpose until the lot's full, at which point it's no more hold barred. So to that end, I don't think there's any planning board review for that opportunity. They're likely to be installed through grass areas owing to some existing infrastructure just across from that rear main entrance. Obviously, at Town Hall. Other improvements here at Town Hall related to plenty more discussions. We are looking to have a bike rack installed, again, a proposal by the Building Row that we put into lawn areas. Let's take a look at, let's follow up on the Wolf Realty topic. Thank you very much. Meeting, I know there was some coordination with Town Council in regard to request to accommodate an additional, or rather, I should say, a deficiency of one parking space owing to their one additional dwelling unit proposed at, I think, 774 College Highway.
Zero, seven, seventy-four, seven, seventy-six, is that what it is?
That's correct. Yes, the multi-use development. Well, it all had a push. Chair, you may be more in line with that thousand and nine, if you'd like to provide the summary.
Sure. They are just going from, proposing to go from two units to three units, keep the same footprint. And that obviously changed the parking calculation. They went back and were able to find one other parking spot, I think, through the reduction in size, you know, 30% reduction in size. Right, so you can have, you know, nine by sixteen for 30% of them versus ten by twenty. So they were able to carve out one other spot, so they have the number of spots. So now the only issue is, can they just reflect those changes on an ASBIL? Town Council was fine with that. You know, he thinks, and I agree, that it's a de minimis change, you know, from a planning board standpoint, I would say it's de minimis. From a legal standpoint, he thinks it's de minimis. Think Ryan Nelson was on. I don't know if there was anything else, Ryan, you wanted to add in this respect. I know that I know that the issue was mentioned by Town Council about this, if there's any changes to the septic because of it. I don't know if you have any information on that.
Hi, everyone. Ryan from Arlevick Associates. We did revise the layout plan of the site. We're able to accommodate that extra parking space needed in the very front parking row by utilizing what was formerly shown as like a grants, grassed landscape buffer. I can try and show my screen. Give me one second. Okay. So previously, this is the front parking lot, the site, College Highways here. Previously, this curbing came out and was symmetrical with this opposite side. We just pulled that curbing back and were able to get that extra parking space in here. So, and then we'll also show that as part of the ASBIL as well.
Okay. Did that change in any way the, the septic requirements? Are you just simply going like from a three bedrooms to two bedrooms? You know, so it's the same number of bedrooms at all?
I'll have to check with, with the status of the septic design. I can't remember if we had submitted that already or not. If not, we obviously will update it to reflect that, the leach field size based on if the number of bedrooms or units changes.
Do you know if it, if there is a change at all? I mean, I, you know, I assume if you're using the same footprint, that in all likelihood, it's pretty close to the same, if not the same number, it's, you know, maybe one more.
Right, I'd have to look at the Title V regulations. Usually it's based on per bedroom for a residential scenario. But if we're, but if we're converting a commercial space to a residential, maybe it's a wash, so I'd have to look closer at that.
Yeah, but that's not what I under, I think I, my understanding was they were taking the second floor, which is all residential, which is going to be two units and changing it to three units and keeping the same exact footprint. So it's essentially the same space that they're turning from two units into three units. I assume, you know, previously there was going to be two, three bedroom units, and now it's going to be three, two bedroom units or something to that effect, right?
Gotcha, yes, that's correct, yes.
A pretty fine space that you're, you know, you can't really carve out five more bedrooms out of there, I don't think. But.
So I don't have the answer for you on the septic, but we have the room to expand it if need be.
All right, so why don't you just, if you can, just follow up with the answer to that? You know, as far as the, the change in the number. And why don't I take a motion, make a finding that you know, assuming that there's not a significant septic change, that this is a de minimis change and can be just reflected on the ASBIL for that property?
So I'll move, Marcus Phelps.
Second.
Because we have some folks on Zoom, Michael Doherty.
I. Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Can we memorialize this in a letter of some kind, so we have it on the record? Because I know Jessica had a good comment last time, that the parking spaces for the resident, for the apartments should have a sign dedicated.
Oh, yeah, I think we had talked about that and they were going to do that, but.
So like we would have three points in the letter to address the parking space, septic and the dedicated.
Parking spot signage.
Yeah, we should have some kind of a letter to the.
Yeah, we can follow up with a, well, I mean, it's going to be in the minutes, which is why I want to do it on the record, but we can put a, we can send a letter to the to, with that, and just indicate what we had, what we had voted on.
Cool.
But I think we add to the vote and we can do it, you know, do another motion, I guess, to record or have them put signs designating what the resident parking is for. Is what, two spots per unit, right? So there'll be six resident spots, so they have to designate six resident home spots, you know, near or adjacent to the adjacent to or near the, where the entrances.
And then it will all be shown on the ASBIL.
Correct. So do I hear a motion about the signage?
So move.
Do a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
All right. Okay.
One more coordination.
Yep.
If you don't mind. Board members, should I refresh my memory as to how we left the planning board report at the end of the work session?
I think we left it as you bugging me until I got.
That's right. The chairman was gonna.
Yeah, he was gonna look at that, right?
That was it. Sorry to bring that up in a public forum.
I think that night.
He was gonna look into it and think he was supposed to get up, get up early.
I do remember the associate fighting for it to be done immediately.
Was it needed? I thought it was right away.
You're basically the same person nowadays, so I mean, it's.
Now we're agreeing.
Freaks my.
Yeah, yes.
Hey, Mike, we're agreeing over here.
I assume as much. It's always going to be the case now.
Too late to get it in the annual report anyway, right?
Oh, no, we're, oh, we have a special. Yes, exactly. Special permission for. Back on my shoulder.
If you get a chance, print out a copy for me tonight.
That's everything. All right, move on.
Seven oh five, public comments. Anybody have anything for the board they want to bring up that is not on the agenda tonight? I am. I can do so.
Thought that was on the agenda.
I will try.
It's not easy.
Yeah.
We haven't taken a mask off yet. All right.
Seven ten, 159 Berkshire Avenue, continued public hearing.
I'm just double checking online. I received correspondence from the applicant's representative, who's continuing to work on some figures, expects to have that submitted in time for Mr. Brown and I to perform our review and have some material that you wanted to message.
Okay.
Requesting continuance to.
How does that agenda look? Currently?
So we've got wireless communication services bylaw revisions at seven ten, and you're open.
Okay. Take a little while with that. I assume we're going to get the results and everything from that, right? Is that planned with that?
It's good, there's going to be a fair amount of that to chew on.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that timing was still. All right, so why don't we put, actually, this will be good. We'll put this at seven thirty. And we probably won't. All right, we hear a motion to continue 159 Berkshire Avenue, public hearing to seven thirty on March first?
Yes.
On March first.
Marcus Phelps, I'll move.
Richard Singer, second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Seven twenty, we're getting close. Hudson Drive.
Just said that.
Large scale, I changed myself. Large-scale solar, continued public hearing.
I'm going to move this.
Sure.
If you can have, we have Connie online, so she can share it online as well.
Double demon.
Yeah, we got all three of us here again tonight. Is this good? Can everyone hear me if I stand here?
You guys okay on Zoom hearing him?
Yep. Yes.
Hey.
Hey. My name is Tom Saunders. I work with EDP, the developer for this project. Online, we have Connie Liu, who is our project engineer, and we have Ed Business, who's our wetland scientist in our environmental consultant. So first off, February seventh, Conservation Committee meeting, we were approved with the standard conditions for that, and a lot of the file. So I haven't seen the draft yet, but we're working to get that in. Following up on a few items from the last planning board hearing we had, first would be the right of way for a shaker farm, the Kotoitzes. So we double-checked this, we had this in our title report, and we designed the system so that it doesn't go anywhere near there right of way. Not on this plan. But we, we spoke with Mr. Goddard, and the right of way goes, you know, basically up to the northwest of the array, so we don't touch that. And furthermore, their agreement with the landowner to use the access road stays intact throughout the construction and the operation of the project, so no changes with that. So we should be all set there. Few points addressing the battery energy storage system. We talked about the conservation condition as well, so just to give a little more detail on this. The location of this, it's a little hard to see here. But do you want me to put the two oh one, Connie? Located basically centrally within the array. And that's for a variety of reasons. Something like 630 feet away from Slab Brook, about 430 feet away on our system, 200 foot through the front area. The system's going to consist of anywhere from two to four steel containers with HVAC units attached to the outside of it. Capacity of the system's going to be anywhere from two to three megawatts, and that depends on the ultimate DC size. It depends on basically how many panels we end up putting in, and that could vary a little bit based on a variety of factors. Anywhere from two to three megawatts, then anywhere from four to 12 megawatt hours because of the duration that will be discharging with. The containers are going to be placed on either a full concrete pad or full-length footings along the sides of the container, and those concrete footings and door pads will be placed on top of crushed stone. Make sure it's level and make sure they get a really solid footing. Only real changes to the plan to talk about. And some of the details. Have changes to the slats. So we specified a specific brand and type of fence flat that we'll be using for privacy slats, like John talked about last time. Those have a 25-year warranty, and they'll be basically locked in from the top and the bottom, so they don't go anywhere. They don't, you know, fade and crack, and if they do, they'll be replaced by the manufacturer. We'll make sure it's nice and durable there. And then the other thing we included on this page. A comment from the Department of Public Works. Just about the vegetated filter scripts. Just in general, what kind of the ground plant mix looks like. It's just a detail, basically of the ground. But just being thorough, make sure overall basis, so. Those are the changes to the plans we have. We had a question about the inflation rate and decon bond last time, and that we feel is totally valid. And again, we sort of submit that as a sample, and we'll commit to negotiating with faith to make sure we get to a good point with that inflation rate. Understand, you know, there's been acute inflation in the past year or two, but we're looking out to like 25, 30 years here, so look to be flexible on that. Then, last thing to have to do with our screening. So we talked about last time, we have currently no residential or commercial partners that can see the property, many buildings, dwellings especially. What we're, we're doing is we're proposing to we're now away the vegetated treating requirement. Again, privacy slats, a little hard to see on this general plan, but everything coming up Hudson Drive, this flat section of fence here, which is where our gate will be, for our gateway privacy slot. This whole western line, privacy slats, and then we'll also put privacy slats on the north line. And that is it for us.
Okay. Any questions by the board members?
Are you putting batteries in a steel building?
Yeah, it's like a steel shipping container.
And the batteries are made out of?
They'll be lifting my batteries.
Any, any issues with these things leaking, no?
No, they're all, you know, any system we use would be, we'd wear this UOL certification for safety, so.
Any other containment outside of that?
Uh, no, not at this time, but and you know, whatever we expect would be placed in the rest for practice safety.
Any other board members have questions?
So there's no sound material under the battery area. It's, you said, crushed stone?
Yeah, it would be a crushed stone footing below the frost lines to prevent any kind of evening, and then the, either a concrete pad or footings that would basically extend along the edges of the container.
So I think preferable would be a concrete pad. Wouldn't you, David?
Yeah.
Because then the shipping containers sit on that pad.
Correct.
So we've got a barrier.
Are these the products specifically made for batteries, or is it just a normal, everyday shipping container, watertight and all that?
They're specifically made for the battery manufacturer, so they're not having watertight, I can't tell you that, but they're not just used shipping containers that they pull out of container ships.
I know there's still a few floating around out there.
Yeah, I know. They don't plug them out from the ocean and spray paint them. They're, they're new.
But you said they're not watertight?
No, I mean, they have the typical, typical rubber seal that you would see on any.
It's just on the door, but the rest of the container's watertight, outside of the door, see it?
Yeah, it's a function of being.
Okay.
So concrete pad would be yeah, you know, if it wasn't over the wellhead, we probably wouldn't be as important.
Yeah, that's understandable.
Yeah.
Okay, you don't want a mask on. This is just now.
Saying yes.
Yeah. Is that sufficient in your mind over the wellhead?
I don't know. Did we do anything different to the other array, which is to the west? There's, there's a one there that we put in right next to the rail trail. I'm assuming that might still be also in the wellhead, but I don't remember.
I remember that being over the well.
I don't think they are.
And they didn't have, they didn't have battery, they were hard.
They didn't have that. Okay, so it's a different animal. So we don't have a comparable.
Well, maybe that's, I mean, I, I think my expectation is, is to close the meeting today, and then, you know, we'll, we'll drop off a decision and vote on it at the next meeting, so maybe in the meantime.
The battery box and nothing else in the containment or anything? It seemed like you had a question on that.
No, no, no. I, my question was whether that's enough to have the pad. I, I just don't, I gotta, I gotta look into that a little bit more. I don't have that straight in my head.
Is there an inspection process of these things?
There's safety certifications, yeah. The system-wise, they undergo pretty extensive lab testing.
Well, you know, I mean, onsite. It's like somebody shows up and says, oh, look, it ate through the bottom of the container.
I mean, there would be periodic inspections anyways throughout the operation of the system.
Can you set a periodic date?
If we want to talk.
Like every, so often or something?
Monitoring schedule that kind of coincides with the mowing schedule, for example. That'll be a thing too.
Well, we're going to have an operation maintenance plan. Usually it's something we include in a special permit is like a. Operation maintenance reference to an.
Yeah, and there is an operation maintenance plan. I believe it's. Finding of the stormwater. Plan in place. So sure, if you want to, if you want to talk about a specific schedule, I mean, that would be incorporated into the operation anyways because. We don't want that to happen just as much as we don't. So. If you want us to call that out, that's fine.
Yeah, more than we're right over the wellhead, you know, oops, and that's a bad day.
Right.
Like you guys.
Yeah. Yeah.
Tom, would you, I think that the, I was gonna hear maybe on our onsite visit, you mentioned that. Systems, the battery banks themselves are really under, I want to call it constant remote monitoring. Yeah, in terms of their, because the performance is a important characteristic. So. Not to drive your bus here, but I think that might address some of the things. I know. Hands on, eyes on his report, but.
Yeah, so remotely, we could, this will be monitored down to the cell level. A cell being. You know, small, right? So remotely, we can see if any cell has malfunction, has misbehaved. Or has any kind of issue.
Psychologically, maybe it needs a hug.
Yeah, exactly. Anything, any problem that it might have, we could see that early on.
All right. Still eyes on is always a good thing.
Right.
I just, I don't know the, I mean, I guess I don't know the cost, but I'm just looking quickly and seeing, I mean. Our battery spill containment systems that you could put. You know. There and I, I know. Again, I don't know enough about it, but that's my, that's my only sort of concern is. Having that sort of level of protection to make sure that we are protecting the wellhead as much as we possibly can. Because that's really the only component of this that has. Any significant issue.
Is there some kind of a set response time for catastrophic failure of sorts? So you determine these batteries with schizophrenic.
The system will shut down.
And how long will it be before somebody gets out?
Hours.
Hours?
Yeah.
You can nobody local?
I mean, ours is local. But yeah, it would be immediate basically. But anything catastrophic happens on the cell level. They shut the whole thing down. And it doesn't spread to any other cell. That's part of that certification.
But it doesn't stop leaks. It's still gonna, if something happens, battery blows up.
Yeah, but that, you know.
It's hours for somebody comes out and find out what happened.
We wouldn't know what had happened remotely. Right away. And if there was an emergency, obviously we would. Alert.
Is there anything in your literature about your batteries, about the substances in these batteries and their reaction with metal?
So we haven't called out a specific battery chemistry yet because that changes really quickly. So we don't want to commit to something now. That we find out, you know, when we go build this thing or something better.
You don't commit to something now. I'm going to commit to very big coverage.
It will be a lithium ion battery. Yeah. And. The safety certifications of these systems are extremely rigorous.
We're going to include a waiver on the vegetative. Buffer. Since it's an industrial zone and there's no.
Well, they also put the, and they put the.
And they're doing slats. On the north. But we have to include a waiver somewhere in the decision.
All right. So I mean, I think the way to go is maybe we can in the meantime, while we're writing the decision, we can look into, you know, what the best. You know. Realistic system may be, whether it's simply just a slab or whether there's something. Some language we can use to sort of. You know. Get something else in there potentially. But. We can, we can table that for now and then talk about that at the, when the decisions. In front of us. All right. Anything else that the board has about this?
Like, we're gonna. Somebody had mentioned about maybe reports, you know, getting reports from the site. Like especially for where would those be, where or who would those be sent to? Building structure, the planning board or where?
Assume they would end up to you. That's where you get. You get some of that from. The reporting from gravel. They have a.
Sure, that's on a periodic basis, but since the board's concerned, it makes sense that would come to my desk.
Right.
You need a bigger desk.
Thanks. Appreciate that. And I just got to ask for it.
Anything else on the board members? Okay, can you just tell me again where you have the fencing? I'm sorry.
This last?
Yeah, this, this last.
All right, so this is. This right here. Where our gate is. This part would have it. Because that's, you know, this is the road.
Yeah.
Obviously, nothing down here. This part all the way up this side.
Yeah, all the way to the end and then over.
And it does show this in the plan against they are called out. Very hard to see from this far away, but they're.
And then refresh my memory as to what is to the. To that, yeah, to the east and to the south, right?
Open chain. Seven foot open chain.
But as far as visibility, what are we looking at to the south and east that you don't need the slats?
So there's a pretty solid vegetated buffer here naturally. And there's also a berm for Slab Brook. Same up here too. And this is kind of West Springfield land. Who would expect something else to happen here?
Yeah, we don't care what happens.
It's all vegetated.
It's.
You said enough. We don't care about that.
Who's Westfield be?
Westfield's up here.
Yeah. No, but I mean, so you have, you have natural vegetative.
Yeah, exactly. So this is, I mean, all this stuff on this side and down here is, is worth.
All right. All right. Do I have any? Town officials who have any comments? All right, any public, oh, Mike. Sorry.
Couple of things. What's the cost of this project ballpark?
Uh, I don't think I would comment. Full cost of the project cost right now.
Any estimate on, I assume it will be pilot payments or something to tell any idea of how much that would take.
Not off the top of my head, but yeah.
Is that, is that in the process?
Not yet.
And how many acres are you talking about?
The fence scenario is about twenty four acres.
So you're buying or leasing?
We are leasing this from.
Is that Tulk?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other town officials? Okay, any public comments? Uh, yeah, I see Mr. Kadowitz hand up if you just unmute.
Okay, um, thank you. I would just like to have him go over again, the, where the fencing, where the gate is going to be. Number one. And also. You guys, you, I think last, last month, we talked about some vegetation on the north side. Outside of the chain link fence. Has that been totally disregarded now?
That's where they're, they're putting slats on the north side as well to, to, to reduce.
There's no vegetation going in up here, right? There'll be no vegetation whatsoever.
Not planted, but anything that's currently there left alone, it's broke. There currently are some sparse trees that there. And the gate. Let me kind of change the screen anymore, but this is.
Yes, she has that.
Okay, great. I'm on two oh one mine. And the gate is basically right here. A little hard to see again, but this is the current path of the haul road. So the gate basically visits to us.
So there'll be a gate right there. Will the gate that's on Hudson Drive now be eliminated?
Nope, the gate that's on Hudson Drive now stays just as it is. We just stayed a chain of fire department lock on with.
Okay. Yeah.
And of our.
That's still can stay the same as we have it now.
Still concrete.
And what's the distance between on the north side? We, uh, till you get to the end of the property? You know. Where the solar stops to where you, does it stop right at the end of the property?
From here to the property line?
Yeah.
This, I don't know off the top of my head, but. My pen handle is four hundred feet, so. Eight hundred feet.
And it's any, is that all? Not really vegetation there. That's still.
In here, there sort of is, but this is obviously where the active.
Right.
Active excavation is going on. We do leave a little bit of room there. So that stays the same. And then obviously when they're done with their work there. Gets. Just sort of back to what.
Ask them to plant trees and they're first looking on. Ground that's art that's still being worked on and will eventually have to be.
No, no, no. No, yeah, no. And I, I mean, you're leasing it from Tulk.
Yeah.
And so it strikes me that we can probably account for the issue if it, if it comes up later on, that we need to address that northern side in any way, shape or form.
There's still an additional four hundred feet that these guys aren't touching.
Yeah.
I don't know that I'd ask them to plant trees there.
Correct. And I, it's also owned by the same people so that, you know, if they needed to come in and do something, they could do something. There really wasn't visual issue by what's.
Obviously, this is going to be something to the same restoration plan they currently have.
Correct.
So they've got ten trees here that are dying.
Correct. They got to do something with it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, any other public comments? Okay. So do I hear a motion to? Close the hearing.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Right here.
Your second.
We'll call vote. Michael Doherty.
I, Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, hi.
Dave Spina, hi.
Jessica Thornton, I.
So. We will draft up a decision and review it and vote on it at the next meeting. Thank you. Uh, the next meeting is March first. March first, two weeks.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night. We leave timeline all alone.
I was gonna say, we're gonna, we are right on schedule, Dave. I don't know what you were thinking. Seven thirty, three seventy North Plymouth Street. Continued public hearing. We have a request from the applicant. Withdraw without prejudice. Let me just. We're seven. Your chairman and board members on behalf of the applicant, Scott and Diane Hodges. We are here in respectfully requesting to withdraw without prejudice of stormwater management permit application. Uh, for the above referenced site, three seventy North Plymouth Street. We would like to thank the planning board members and the town staff for their time, review and consideration given towards this project. It's really our of associates. So do I hear? We don't actually even need to hear a.
Yeah, we have to have a motion to accept.
Yes, we do. Do I hear a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Mike, I refuse myself.
Yeah. Uh, do I hear a motion to accept?
Who seconded?
Who did?
I, I made a motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Jessica Thornton.
All right. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Jessica Thornton, I.
Okay. That's done. Seven forty five. See, six minutes late. According to your new thought.
You've got luck.
Standby. One forty one Congamont Road, continued public hearing. All right. Let's see. Forty one.
Page letter.
What did we get to, John, last time?
Last meeting, we worked through. The reading and discussion for Lake Management Committee, the first round of Lake Management Committee comments and CPW comments. Let that goes into a response letter and we receive. Second letter from Lake Management Committee.
Okay, so. Just so that we can. Get the record fully complete and. Then move on from there. Let me just quickly read in. Other comments. That we have gotten. From other departments and individuals. So. All right. So the fire department. Was addressed. By the plan.
By actually coordination.
By the new, is there a new plan?
There is a new plan, but the, their departments were addressed at a roundtable meeting with the building inspector and. The applicants.
Okay. Prior to the last meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, so. Yes, so the record's clear. Let me read it in and with the knowledge that you have already. Department. The original comments dated January eighteenth. From Chief Anderson say. Uh, with regard to utilities, the plan calls for utilities to stay the same. The plan shows it. Overlay of a parking space overlapping a propane tank. It appears to be referencing an old service with a newly designed parking space. If the propane tank is to remain, then parking space violates current code. Either the tank moves to new the patient and follow installation code or the parking. Basically to move. If the tank is to stay in place, it will require proper protection for possible traffic protection. Parking count, the plan calls for a sixty seven arena and has listed an occupancy of ninety five. The occupancy rate dating back to two thousand and fourteen is. Hundred and sixty six for just that restaurant. Is my belief that the occupancy rate cannot be arbitrarily reassigned by an applicant. In the submitted plan, it states that they will keep the original footprint and do minimal modifications. So with simple math, an occupancy of one sixty six plus the arena plus ten staff puts the possible occupancy over two hundred people. The existing assessment shows a square footage of over nineteen thousand when you include all the decking. The submitted plan describes the existing footprint as six thousand nine hundred fifty square feet. I feel it goes without saying that if you have an activity with a full deck of patrons. And the restaurant indoors is near capacity and it begins to rain, everyone is going to occupy the indoor restaurant, thus creating an overcrowding and a safety hazard. This in turn relates to over parking in the area with patrons parking on side streets, something accessed by emergency vehicles. This in turn relates to over parking in the area with patrons parking on side streets, something accessed by emergency vehicles. And finally, to determine occupancy, he says that it's his feeling that this application is playing a part before the forest. We must determine and agree to the occupancy limitations before this thing parking. This should be determined by a licensed architect. Occupancy is one element to determine safety requirements such. Where's egress issues such as deck egress into parking areas or back into the restaurant. I feel until the final plan is submitted, it is difficult to sign off on any site plan review. Uh, we get. Rest at a meeting. In January. Noting that if implemented as described with the inclusion of sprinklers and egress design, I have no issues regarding safety, parking or access. Uh, owners have a strong understanding for attempting to do this in the best. Fire department. The. These. January seventeenth, I every I reviewed the special permit amendment for one forty-one Congamond Road. The only issue I can see is the sign. The current sign does not cause a line of sight issue. That said, the current signs in disrepair, and I imagine they will erect a new one. If they put it on the same footprint as the current sign, it should not be a problem. The location is moved from its current location. The line of sight to the west needs to be evaluated. If it's going where it is on the drawings, it is in all likelihood going to be okay. Problem, it should be noted that the post signs on town property, not on private property. By law says that it must be ten feet from the property line, but. Property, it must be made clear that the sign absolutely cannot obstruct the view to the west. It being town property, I also don't know if the town. Others would object to it being there at all. That is the only input I have for this project. Sergeant Paul Myers. Hey. And. If we can BPW, I have. Verbal comments from Irene McKnight, Beach Road. Uh, lots of expressor concerns regarding the proximity of the post parking expansion and the absence of buffering, the proposed size of the Marina component. And the potential for litter and debris accumulation due to prevailing wind along the shoreline. All right. I think that's it, John. Is that right? Unless there's, uh, we have the new letters, obviously.
That's correct. I think uh, if you will, my comments um. As well as the responses, LMC, round one, BPW, this is our all part of um, all of that associated.
Okay.
And the new correspondence as well as uh, we do have a new round of comments from Lake Management, but perhaps we should take those in sequence.
Yeah, so um, I will turn it over now to. Our Leveque and let them, the applicant and our Leveque, let them make whatever presentation they want with the changes and then we can go from there.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Ryan Nelson again from Arlevic Associates. Uh, we have submitted a revised site plan that incorporates a lot of changes and addresses most of the concerns that various um departments, as well as your own board have had for this project. Um, I'll go through some of the the main changes and then we can have some discussion on whatever questions may arise from that and then address the comments from the other committees. Uh, first and foremost are the dock configurations. At the previous meeting, there was concern about the adequacy of spacing between the docks. Under this revised plan, we have eliminated that fourth future dock that was proposed. And we've now evenly spaced the three docks as far apart as we can, providing by the twenty-five foot property line extension setbacks. Um, we've also incorporated twenty foot fingers on some of the the docks to um allow for mooring of longer boats. So the space between. The tip of each finger from the northerly dock to the middle dock would be roughly forty-six and a half feet. And that would be the same for the distance between the middle dock and the southerly dock. And we've examined other marinas on Lake Congamond from aerial imagery. And we feel that this is right in the very similar to other marinas that have existed on the lake. Um, another one we measured was forty-four feet of separation. So that still leaves us with sixty total slips, forty being rentals, twenty being transient slips for the restaurant. Another change that we made was we regraded the southerly parking expansion area. Currently, there's a a mild slope. We would be cutting into that slope and implementing a a small retaining wall on the southeast corner of the parking lot to accommodate that grade change. The grading would still shed water towards the interior of the site. There's an existing catch basin that is located at a low point within the parking lot. So stormwater drainage would remain the same uh patterns in this area of the site. Additionally, we've added proposed shrub plantings as screening. Along the strip of landscaped island between the parking and beach road to help shield. Headlight overspill onto abutting properties west of Beach Road. And then we've done the same with a proposed fence along the southerly property line. To address some of the housekeeping items, um, we've added wheel stops at the parking spaces in areas we saw fit next to the building or other important areas. Uh, we've updated the parking count. It is fifty-nine spaces. Uh, if I go over to our parking table, I can kind of give you a breakdown of. Final tally. Just to refresh everyone, we have a ninety person occupants occupancy for the restaurant and that is based. Ninety-five, sorry. And that is based on. A licensed architect, Mr. Christian Carey, who um determined that number and we have documentation from him supporting that. So under the zoning regulations, the spaces required pa- based upon that and the one space per employee shift would be forty-eight. And we are providing forty-eight spaces. And then if you take the forty rental slips with a one parking space for every two slips. That would require twenty slip, uh, sorry, twenty parking spaces. And we're only able able to provide eleven. So total, we're providing fifty-nine parking spaces out of a required sixty-eight. And that parking calculation does not include the twenty transient boat slips for site access. We've also added to the plan a truck loading area. This would be at the front of the restaurant area where it's easiest to unload supplies. Um, this spot is, I believe, twelve feet wide by twenty-five feet long. It's our anticipation that a truck would pull in. Um, in this direction and then back up to the doors and then they could easily pull out onto Congamond Road again. Um. Also was sent over with this revised plan was a. A figure or a sketch to show the. Separation from the proposed docks to the culvert underneath Congamond Road. We address the concerns others had of navigation and traffic going through that culvert. Um, we can get to that in a minute, but I guess while I'm on the site plan, I'd like to answer any questions you you might have about this.
Uh, yeah, this is Jacob Singer. I noticed on your center. Uh, here there, the fingers look shorter than the other fingers do on the other docks. Is that for a reason or does this a misdrawing?
Uh, no, that's correct. There the center dock will have ten foot long fingers. As opposed to the outer docks with twenty foot long. Um, and the applicant, Mr. Eggleston, will be controlling and moderating which or what size boats will be appropriately located for each dock.
Somebody will monitor that?
Yes, those will be, those will be those slips.
Well, this is the center, the center docks are the transient docks. Those are not the Marina docks.
Those are only all ten feet. They're still gonna be parked.
Right.
There was a twenty for that side, so if you have a bigger boat, you you can't come eat.
No, they they could still come eat, but it's not, we have room to tie up.
There should be some twenty footers on that as well.
Um. I don't, I don't think it's necessary, nor.
I understand that, but there should be twenty footers on that side as well for the transient boats.
Because they're transient, they're not, they're not going to be there in in bad weather or twenty-four hours a day.
Still gonna be moored up.
Right, they're gonna be, there's plenty of room for them to more up. They can, they can pull in and be, you know, sitting right in this space here.
Still gonna be moored up.
Yes, they'll be moored up for a temporary period of time.
That's why they requested the twenty footers on the others. It's because it's still gonna be moored up. Well, they're there for an hour, six hours.
Uh, any other board questions on that issue?
On that part.
On the uh plan itself?
No, on these things that he's brought up so far. Well, yeah, the question was how was it going to be controlled? And that's gonna be somebody, there's gonna be somebody in charge of watching the dock and so where they're gonna be at.
They're. We're, we're not, we're not gonna be controlling. The transient docks. We're not gonna be controlling the people who are coming in to eat or whatever, other than to make sure that they don't park in any of the rental slips. It's gonna be identified as, you know, temporary parking. No, it's not at their own risk. It is not at their own risk.
Not to the control those to just your rental ones. Right, the shrub line along the streets. Get you, what do you, what's your shrubbery plant? What are you planning on putting in there for actual, actual shrubs? And what's the spacing between the the driveway and the uh, the edge?
It says you're a three foot boxwood. Or approved equivalent.
And the spacing between the existing edge of pavement on Beach Road and the proposed curb line would be five feet. This is a five foot buffer.
What is a boxwood?
It's in.
It's a bush. Is it a light blocking bush?
Uh, they, when allowed to grow and they can be easily shaped, it could be a pretty continuous hedge, yes.
Size of these seems gonna be when they're put in.
Uh, we're proposing three foot installed, three foot high.
Put high in the spacing?
Uh, they are five foot on center.
You can get us some pictures of these?
I can find some, sure.
Speaking of that, I would uh. Propose or expect. Something different than vegetation. I don't think vegetation is going to survive. Uh, the salt that's put on Beach Road and the snow plowing. I'm thinking a low wall of some kind. There's precast uh structures that you can get. That I think are gonna be substantial enough if they're three feet high or whatever the headlight height is, you know, because that's the issue, light shining out. Uh, so to me, plantings are not gonna move.
For, for aesthetic purposes. We can do what you're saying. But for static purposes, I don't think that anybody wants a wall along a road that's only, you know, I don't know, ten feet wide.
But I, there are architecture, they're precast that have.
Yeah, but it's still.
Architecturally, it looks like a stone wall. That would be my.
The wall is the light shining on these people's houses.
There's only one house there.
Doesn't matter if there's a one or a hundred, it still's light shining on somebody's home. That's the, that's what he's trying to tell.
Right, and the lights are only gonna shine. I'm not opposing what you're saying. I'm just saying that.
What time you open till?
Most nights, two AM.
Two AM. And 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 have headlights shining on these people's house at two AM.
For thirty seconds as people are leaving at two AM, how many people are going, ten people? Um, are going to leave and they're gonna turn headlights on long enough to drive out of the parking lot. It's just like somebody driving by the house. Whoever's driving down Beach Road, the lights are there. Well, it's not like the lights are gonna be on from, you know, ten AM when we open to two AM when we close. They're not gonna be on just shining at the building. They're gonna, you know, someone's gonna start their car, the light's gonna come on and they're gonna leave. Um. But we are concerned about how it's gonna look.
I know, I understand, but I think there's a, you need to have an alternative to live vegetation because. That's tight in there and it's.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know how substantial, I I know boxwood, but I don't know how they sand up the salt spray. Uh, and being, you know, hit with snow.
Are we putting salt on that road? Back close to the lake?
I would, I don't know. All roads. I'm assuming we treat it somehow. Or we plow snow. We plow snow on.
Right.
Anyway.
But for. There was a restaurant here previously, correct?
Mm-hmm.
For some thirty years. This house has been over here a lot longer than I think this building and that restaurant. And it only closed three years ago. Was there a problem then with light shining on the house?
We're working on this problem, pro- project right here, right now.
I understand. But, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, I I, those arguments don't mean much to me because we couldn't have do it, we couldn't do anything about it. So, you know, if you're coming in for a new application. We should address what problems exist, right? I mean, it's the same with the idea that. You looked at all the other marinas in Congamond and they all have this. Well, if those were put in forty years ago, I'm not sure I. Care so much as they were forty years ago. They should be addressed to what is existing now, right? I mean, so. It it's not to say that. You know, that's wrong. I'm just saying it doesn't mean much to me to say forty years ago, this is the way it was done, so we should just keep that. I mean, that's, we should address what's currently existing.
Well, you know, there, there is a marine on a lake that was put in forty years ago, but ten years ago got its license. And, okay.
No, I mean, and if, if we need to look at, you know, and compare things that are done in the same timeframe, we can certainly do so. I I don't know enough about it to. To address that, but.
Like, you know, putting, putting a wallop is 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 fine. I just think it's gonna be ugly.
Well, I don't, I don't expect it to be a six foot high wall. It'd just be high enough. To block the lights.
I would envision something that you see alongside nicely done city sidewalks, which would be. A two and a half, three foot tall cement that has a planting section in the middle that you could then. So it's a little bit more beautiful and had a compromise there that. You have a little bit more solid of a block and you're keeping the bushes or whatever plantings are there off of the ground and out of the way of potential. Salt hazards and road debris.
And I saw a plan or flowers and annuals, annuals come, yeah, yeah.
Not sure Mr. Leveque's people who are landscape architects could. Do something. Helpful. Uh, I need to go to the parking here. Uh. So we've got fifty-nine total. We need forty-eight for the restaurant, so there's eleven spaces left. And you're using the factor of one space for every two slips. So that means you could have enough parking for twenty-two slips. I, but you're trying for forty. Right?
We're, we're saying that the eleven of the eleven are provided for. Adding up to the fifty-nine.
Eleven parking spaces. But if you use one space for two least slips.
Then the spaces required are twenty.
And you only have eleven. Square balance.
That is correct.
So are you gonna have a reservation system of some kind or how are you going to?
No, we, we, I think we've covered this before. We also said that, and we're not, we're not showing it on the paper, but I think that um. Uh, Ryan made mention of it. We also have these twenty transients. That we at one time thought, I think it was yourself, Jessica.
You took those out of the sixty. You had sixty total. You took twenty out, so there's forty left.
Yeah, we took, we took, we took twenty rentals out from sixty to forty. But we've always had the twenty in the middle, which is the transient, which is for parking.
Forty slips for Marina.
Yes.
And you only have eleven. Spaces to serve those forty slips.
Yes, but we also have, in addition to the forty-eight in the parking lot spaces, that forty-eight plus eleven is the fifty-nine. In addition to those, we also have the twenty transient docks that is parking for people coming in on boats. Some people will come in in a car and park here, some people will come in on a boat and park here. And what I think we said in previous meetings was that we would say that, okay, let's allow half of that. Let's say that, so you got, so you've got parking here for twenty boats, but let's just say that ten of them are going to be added to the parking in the front. Those are.
So you're using water-based parking to combine with land-based parking.
Correct, not a hundred percent, half, fifty percent.
On that parking thing, you've got.
Mike, isn't that something you recall?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I, I.
It was something you've been proposing, I don't think that we ever said that, that it, that it made sense to us to to take away land spaces, or I think I use the term for land lovers to come to your restaurant, that you would then take away from those needed parking spaces by adding to your calculation the transient boat slips. Like, sure, the transient customers that come on those boats are gonna be part of your uh, ninety-five occupancy. However, you still have people coming on land and we are not convinced that you have enough spaces both for those restaurant customers to come in via land, but also you're asking us to accept your calculation that each marina slip is only requires half a parking space. Um, and then to then additionally, if we accept that calculation, that you have nine less than that going into it. So we would be accepting your calculation because we don't have one currently in our bylaws for use. And then also waiving that math and saying, okay, well, even nine less. So that's where we're running into the issue, is that you're asking us to allow this additional use, these forty permanent boating slips, and combining that with an already restricted parking area for the existing use of a restaurant. I think we all agree that we want to see this place in use and that a restaurant reopening there would be great to have service for transient boaters is a great thing, but is there enough parking in that step for you to have forty people paying to park their boats there?
Yeah, I can't see the parking there, you got forty slips that people are paying for and only twenty parking spots. Where, where's the other twenty gonna park?
And the mathematics you're giving us.
It's a holiday and they wanna all go on the boat at the same time.
Half of our lake management committee is saying it's technically too large usually.
You can't, you can't, you can't do that. But you, you're talking about an exception of a, of a busy day.
No, no, that's.
If you.
If you have twenty rental spots, they're not gonna walk to their boat, they're gonna drive their car. Or down here, you would call it a car. One from it's a car. They're gonna need a place to put that car. Forty slips, forty parking spots for rental.
And their buddy who's coming that day to go boating with their friend who has a boat. And so, as our, in our lake management committee, and I'm going to rely heavily on their expertise because I am not a daily boater. Um, but their expertise makes sense to me that on average, one marina boat has two cars coming to it.
Okay.
It's a beautiful day, Mr. Sutton is inviting me out for, you know, to go tubing on Lake Congammon. That means we need parking for his big truck and you need parking for my big truck. And we're also already limiting space sizing down in some cases as well, so.
But you won't be parking here to use his boat.
Why wouldn't I? Where else am I gonna park?
You're gonna, if I'm renting from you, they're coming.
Oh, if, I think you're talking to you personally.
Marina I belong to.
If Mr. Sutton were to rent a slip from you.
I, I have four boats ranging from eight feet to twenty-seven feet.
Okay.
And, and unless I'm fishing by myself early in the morning, because nobody else will wake up, there's somebody meeting me after I launch the boat. Because you've only got so many spots that you can park in, in the boat launch. And that's only for vehicles with trailers. And then you have X amount of parking extra at the main launch over on, over by between North Pond and, and Middle Pond.
None of, none of these boaters.
Are allowed to have.
Will have trailers.
No, I, I didn't say anything about that.
But you said if you, when you bring your trailer, you said.
Already in the water.
Right.
I'm talking about, it is not very often, like your hypothesis had been, there's that rare occasion where you're not having somebody else come with you on your boat.
But you also, you also brought up the point that you're fishing at eight AM. So if there's forty, if there's forty.
Regenerate my point. You got forty, forty rental spots.
Yes.
Requires forty parking spots.
Okay, I thought, I thought that we had had this discussion and beat it to death before and came to an agreement on it, but never, and I also.
I remember you telling us this eighteen times.
No. Okay. Never, never will these forty boats be off those docks at the same time. I hundred percent guarantee it. One hundred percent guarantee you that not all forty of these boats.
You have forty rental slips that's gonna require forty parking spots.
And I, you know, I don't, I would defer to people who know more about this than myself. But in my.
Twenty-five percent will get used at, at any one time.
Uh, you know, I've looked online, I've looked at Lake George, New York, because they have standards for marinas. And what they've used is, it's a little bit tough for me to tell, but at a minimum, one and a half spaces per vessel, if not two per vessel. Um.
That's Lake George, but okay. There's, there's nothing, there's nothing like that written anywhere in the state of Massachusetts.
Because we don't have a ton of, of marinas in Massachusetts. I, I, I mean, that I know of that are similar to this with lakes. I, I mean.
On great, on great ponds. Or lakes.
I, I don't think that there's a, I, I mean, I remember John looking for similar situations in Massachusetts and not having much luck finding it, because I don't think that there's a ton of marinas on, you know, significant-sized lakes or ponds in Massachusetts. I, I, I'm, I'm not aware of any of them.
I think part of John's findings were, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, were that they would all love to see how this falls out because they don't have plans. They don't know either, they just have allowed it and, and.
I think there was one or two, but again, I just, I mean, you can tell me and I'm happy to go look and see what they look like, but I'm not aware of many areas in Mass that are, that have these, the same situation.
As, as we go into this, agree that there's eleven spaces left over for the marina. Right? Fifty-nine total, forty-eight needed for the restaurant. That's eleven spaces.
I'm, but I'm not.
And I would, I would accept their judgment that one space could serve two lease slips, which means twenty-two slips can be served by those eleven spaces. So let's try one twenty-space, twenty-slip dock and the transients. And that's it for a start and see how it works, because we're gonna have in, in the conditions, in the decision that we're gonna come back and look at this again.
Yes, yeah, we have a look back in the, in the provisions there.
You know, a look back.
Right.
So then we'll see how it's, how it's.
Now, look back was for forty, was for forty, wasn't it?
Yeah, but I, I don't think you can do forty.
But at a minimum, you are, so you're using the fifty-nine. That's including town-owned spaces.
Mm-hmm.
Which we still haven't made a decision on as to whether you include those or not. You know, you know DPW's position on that. Um, so, you know, I mean, I, I I think there's at least the argument that you additionally include those. Um, you know, and if, if something changes, obviously that impacts the the ability to use them and ability to, you know, operate certain aspects of the marina restaurant, right? But as to that it was. But, you know, so you still have that issue built in there too, to get even to the fifty-nine. And I just, I, I'm the idea that, you know, only a quarter of those boats that are using dock on Congammon are gonna be out on a nice summer day, I think is unlikely. I, I just, I think that's unlikely. And not to mention, when that's not even accounting the question on Congammon that we still have to deal with.
It's a whole other issue of whether or not a marina should be.
Yeah, and I don't know, that's within our authority to do that.
That's absolutely within our authority.
Mm-hmm, we have a bylaw?
I, I would presume that in every planning board meeting we've had so far, we're a special permit and we solicit input from town officials and other boards that we take that into consideration in our decision.
Right, that's why I'm considering it. I'm saying twenty slips plus the twenty transient and not forty.
That's what Mr. Phelps is.
Yeah, so Mr. Phelps is saying.
Right.
That's my opinion based on what's available. And there's lots of, there's two conditions.
There, there's, there's nothing in the Massachusetts waters stating how many boats per acre, how many boats were allowed on Lake Congammon or any other great, great pond. There's no numbers, there's no overcrowdedness, there's nothing that says that, you know, that there's too many boats on Lake Congammon. We all know there's too many boats on Lake Congammon, but whether there's no slips, twenty slips or forty slips isn't gonna change the number of boats that are on this lake. Those, those forty boats are gonna be on the lake whether they, do, do you think that they're parking their boats here and paying money to park their boats here when they don't intend to be on the lake on a regular basis?
Where, how are they getting on the lake?
How are they getting on the lake?
They're going to the state ramps?
And they're gonna launch their boat, and they're gonna add to the numbers on the lake. There's a, there's, there's a, there's a finite number of spaces in those, in those launches.
Mm-hmm.
A finite, I think it's, what is it, fifty-eight total?
I don't know.
Something like that, there's, there's an exact, you know, there's a number.
That is the reduced number of fifty.
Okay, so any boats that are already in the water are counted, fifty-eight, they're counted. You put forty more in your lake, that's forty more boats on the pond, no matter how you look at it. You just add it to the number of boats on the pond, so you can't sit there and say it's not gonna change the number on the lake.
Yeah, I'm, I'm referring to others, but I can't, I find it hard to believe that on a nice summer weekend day, that those good day parking spots are not full early on in the day. I mean, I, I, I find it hard to believe that you're gonna find one of those come midday and.
Hmm. I've gone many, many times and I live two, like three miles from the boat launch. I've gone down there with my speedboat and get there nine o'clock in the morning, I'm going home.
Well, that's because you guys, not you guys, but that the lake allows fishing tournaments every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday morning.
They allow boats to be launched, there's still only fifty-eight. No matter how you look on it, it's fifty-eight, because there's only fifty-eight spots that you can, you can put a launch, a, a place to launch. So you can say fishing tournaments all day long, but there's still only fifty-eight possible spots to watch.
And whether it's a state requirement or not, the town of Southwood has instituted our lake management committee to address those sorts of things that are left and we rely on them and their monitoring of our lakes and.
Has there been any, 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 uh, request from, from the harbor master on what his thoughts on this are?
What's the thought?
It went to the police department.
But that's, that's totally different division. If that went to Palm Miles, that's just for public road safety. That's not the lake. Somebody should check with, with, uh, Chief Landis.
But they went, went at the select board.
Well, to see what their input is.
Not just a couple of weeks ago requesting money for a new boat.
Yes, they're requesting money for a new boat because.
They've been launching out for more issues.
Yep. That and the, uh, the sheriff's department has now put a permanent presence on the lake and, uh, their training sessions up, they'll be enforceable, because it's getting, that's how it's getting.
Okay.
Could we move on to any other issues related to this? I mean, I, in my mind, I'm satisfied with understanding the parking and so forth. All right, vegetation.
Could, could I ask us to look back at what Jessica's counts were at two or three meetings ago? That we all said, you all said, yeah, that sounds good. Um, and we think that we can work with those numbers. And two meetings ago, informal meetings, um, we all sat around right here and said that we would start with forty slips and, and see, you know, and have a look back on it. Um, I thought that those discussions were over. And we were only dealing with the new, the new questions and concerns.
Um, if you're talking about the discussions we had in an informal discussion before the board, those are done without any input from any other board or commission or town. And, you know, it's not the full scope of what the application's gonna be, so. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to go back and look at what we talked about exactly.
And for all the math, I know myself and Mr. Spina looked at it pretty heavily one of the times that you were here. Um, we may have done the math and we may have percentage due with the numbers, but um, at no point in time did I think that they were good numbers. I was always, it was always a question of, do you really think that that's enough for what you're proposing? Now you're here with the official proposal. Tell on you.
Plus, as we go.
And there was supposed to be the twenty percent thing that Mr. Phelps was.
Study, research, and we check. Things change, information's added that make decisions move in a way or another. This is, this is a process. What it's driving for.
Okay.
Um, Ryan, did you wanna move to there's a second part or second thing that was submitted to as far as the, um, it was, uh, dealing with the path of the.
Yes.
Right?
Yep, one second.
You're public?
So the lake committee had brought up some concerns about boats passing between middle and south pond and if there would be any conflict with the proposed docks. Uh, so the sketch here shows where the proposed dock should be and then a center line of that passage through the culvert. Um, from the outermost finger of the most northerly dock, it's about a hundred and change, uh, feet to that center line. And then from where the northerly dock meets the shore, it's about a hundred and fifty-six feet or at least that, and that's from our limit of reconfiguration zone. A hundred and fifty-six feet from the culvert to our reconfiguration zone boundary.
And how far out does that go, refresh my memory?
One hun- one hundred and fifty is from, is the maximum distance from shore.
Have any of you taken any consideration proper lake etiquette? What have you taken into consideration on that?
The position of the docks?
How does boat etiquette work?
Right of way, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
There's, they're waiting. If there's any waiting that's going on, it's on the other side of this buoy. There's a buoy out here.
Just, just because I, I, I do this all the time, it's easier if I just give you a little point. I'll borrow your map. You've got X point here, right about out of here, you've got a buoy. You have.
On the buoy, the buoy's down where you've got the hundred and one, right, right there.
Well, there's the buoy.
Yep.
Okay, that's the buoy, that's the line of sight to see straight through. Right, you've got it, you've got a little over eight-feet-wide gap that you're looking through to find out, is there a boating boat coming? Because there's no light system, there's no green light, red light, yellow light, okay? So, you come over here, you motor your boat over to a line of sight where you're far enough away to stay out of an navigation hazard. Hold on, the other side has the right of way, because he was there first. He's starting to motor out, so you're waiting around here in the line of sight. Whether he's coming through, a couple of kayaks coming through, or canoe, or jet ski, or whatever. Or if there was three or four boats when I got there, those three or four boats have the right to come through before I go, because they've been waiting. That's etiquette. Okay, so while they're waiting here, the first thing that happens if it's a kayak, first thing he's gonna do is peel to the right, because etiquette on a lake is counterclockwise rotation. The outer band is your slowboats, your kayaks, your, your, uh, canoes, things along those lines. Puntoon boats that are just lightly monitoring along, checking out the day, enjoying a cold beverage. The inner band is where your speeders are. Guys with your tubes and your water skis and whatnot. Center of the lake, usually there's some trick stuff going on there with those crazy jet skis that people swing. So this guy's gonna come down, the first thing he's gonna do is get away from the traffic, he needs a peel to get out of that area. And he's gonna come right through here.
He's got a hundred and one feet to do it without going anywhere near us.
You just put a lot of people in hazard. That's a, a opinion. I'm just explaining what, how, how I've seen it over the last twenty-five years playing on the lake.
And I've been there for twenty, living on the lake, going through that culvert.
I just wanted to point that out, that it does become an navigational hazard for motors.
I've s- I've sat there and seen kayakers go through, jet skis go through, five, six boats sitting and circling. Waiting to go through.
And you totally understand.
Right, but it's nowhere near the, nowhere near the front of the, the old Krabby Joe docks or whatever.
But your, your presumption there in your mind is that your people aren't going to go outside your hundred and fifty line. You're asking us to add in an additional forty boats that are going to be parking themselves there that are going to be exiting from your area. Into where? Directly into the main line of traffic.
No, they're going to be exiting, they're going to be exiting out here, straight out here. And this is the line of traffic. Now, granted, that line of traffic may extend something like that or like that. But aren't my people, most people are going to be sitting here.
People on the other side, on the farthest side closest to the culvert, where are they going to be exiting?
Here's a culvert.
Where are they coming? Where are they going?
They're going to go right here.
They're, they're going to pull out into.
Pull out right into here.
What we're telling you is the line of sight. Where people have to.
This is the center over here.
I mean, I, I understand that, but you're, you're bringing a whole bunch of, you're bringing exiting boats. And boats coming through within a reasonably confined space right there.
People are pretty careful when it's going through these culverts. I mean, I, I look, this culvert doesn't, I don't think is a problem at all. Do, what goes on down the other end of the lake? The other end of the lake, I would agree with a lot about what you're saying. I've sat there for a half hour.
You know what we're focusing on? We're focusing on, on something before the planning board, not the other side of the lake, I'm sorry.
I don't believe that that problem exists in that area.
Well, wouldn't all this have to be addressed when they, he has to get a chapter ninety-one permit from the state? For a marina, right? So they're going to look at a lot of this.
I have no clue what, what the state's process is. I don't know if they send anybody out to monitor the lake or not. All I'm going by is what's happening here in Southwood.
So what is, what is your solution to the problem?
I'm not here to make solutions. I'm, I'm here just to figure out what.
So would you accept that plan or not accept that?
At this point, I'm not going to answer that question.
I wouldn't accept that.
For that reason?
My solution is to allow this for the marina, this period transients and hold off on that. And if you get a chapter ninety-one permit from the state for the whole area. Then when we do our relook in a year, we'll see how things are going. And there's a possibility of adding to it. I mean, I, David knows a lot more about voting than I do. You know, I would trust his judgment on the traffic situation.
I mean, you also have, you're just being somebody who's driven by it on a given summer day. You can see multiple boats waiting and they don't wait in a straight line. And the direct line that you have on your plan here, a hundred and one feet away from the edge of shore, they. Tend to kind of cluster around and then you wait for that one person to come through.
And the jet, and the jet skis aren't sitting still, they're circling a little bit and.
Right, and, and it's, it's fine to be dismissive and to think that people are going to be self-monitoring. But let's be realistic, that's not necessarily the case. You're also talking, right now, we're just looking northwise towards the culvert. There's also the town beach that you're looking to more forty-plus boats. Right away from where people are swimming. So there's also that concern that we haven't addressed.
Wasn't the town beach have buoys that go out?
Those are buoys for, for a person to go only so far. Doesn't stop wave or beach erosion from boats repeatedly taking. Or any of that.
I get the beach erosion, I know that because I've had to put up a whole. For my front of my property because of erosion.
All right, is there anything, Ryan, was there anything else? Or the back standpoint that you wanted to bring up tonight?
Those were the only two figures. We had a comment response letter. It's pretty lengthy and we've touched upon most of it, so I don't know if you wanted to go through the whole thing or if you just had select items that haven't been addressed yet.
That's what I'm looking through now. We're certainly not going through the whole thing tonight. Probably going to continue this on for the next meeting because it's getting a little late. I don't see. Anything else in here? Is this in just mine or is it in anybody's? All right, anybody on the board have anything else that they, on this response letter that they wanted to talk about tonight, at least? All right. So.
Are we going to ask the harbor master to?
Yes.
Look this.
That's number one on my list is reach out if you could John to Chief Landis about that. You know, especially with the issues that have been brought up at the select board meetings, I, I, you know, I do want to get their. Input on that. Else. On a to-do list before we take this up at the next meeting. Yeah, I'm going to open it up for, for, if anybody could people, you know. Yeah, I'm going to hear their comments, but I just wanted to at least get through what we needed to get through. Anything else?
Mike, just before we shift over that. Clear the discussion with Chief Landis as harbor master is directed towards the marina and navigational. Concerns or I would say just a. Got it, thank you.
All right.
And Levec's going to look at changing that buffer along the beach road.
Correct, and I think that's a good idea to do the planters. I think that sort of is the best of all worlds. One of you two would come up with it, so. Same mind. All right, so any town officials have any comments tonight?
Yeah, this is Randy Brown.
Randy, yours.
Thank you. So I think one item that wasn't touched upon was in my comment, number two. Town bylaw, chapter one eighty-three, thirty A one. States that parking area shall not be located within fifteen feet of a street line of any lots. I know we've talked a little bit about the parking along Congamon Road. I think, I think if the applicant wants to use that parking, I, I think there should be some more discussion on that with the select board. And maybe some agreement between the town to utilize that parking. But I also want to talk about the parking along Beach Road. Ryan, can you outline the twenty-foot right of way along Beach Road? And I guess, like, my concern is you have your property line and the shrubbery and. The front end of all those parking spaces are within that twenty-foot ride right away. I, I would certainly like to see that pushed back. I mean, I, I think if you're to meet the intent of the bylaw. The parking spaces should be fifteen feet beyond that, that, that property line. But if, if there's, the board's going to give in a little bit on that, certainly the, the, the parking should be not in the right of way at all. So I think those, I think there's seventeen spots there. I believe these, they, those should be pushed back. And Ryan, can you show the, the twenty, can you highlight the twenty-foot right of way line? This black, dark black line is the property line and the twenty-foot right of way is this gray or dashed line right here. Yeah, the, the right of way line, that's the one I want to focus on. You see all the shrubbery in the front end of all those, all, all those.
So Randy, just so I understand, I mean, I think generally your position is you don't, you think they should all be pushed back and comply, but. Is there a huge issue? If the planter fed is in the right of way, I mean, is that going to be a significant issue if they? You know, going forward, or is that something, assuming that the risk is on the applicant? You know, that that may have to get. Destroyed in some way or, you know, moved and whatever else, if necessary.
Yeah, there, there are utilities, there's a water line and a gas line on, on Beach Road. So we certainly need access to those if we ever need to do repairs or maintenance on those lines. You know, at some point, Beach Road may also be widened. I mean, I think the right, the road is probably ten to twelve feet wide there. It may be nice to widen at some point and we need the real estate to do that. You know, we need that twenty-foot feet, twenty-foot wide right of way to do that type of work. And we're losing all that with the plantings and the planter and these parking spaces.
Why are you losing that? I mean, you still have that right.
Those plantings are inside of the curb. There's a curb there now.
No, but they may widen it.
That, that may be widened. Why, why, why can't, why can't those parking spaces be, be pushed back so it's outside the right of way?
I think, I think that's something that I think that they should do is move the parking spaces outside the right of way. That's only. A couple of feet, right? It looks like. As best as I can tell from here. I'm talking more about that planter. You know, if that was within the right of way, is that something that, you know, as long as they're taking the risk on that and, and knowing that that may. Impact. Their ability to use those spots down the line. I mean, if that comes down, I, you know, the condition I think would be that you can't use those spots. Unless you change it to put in a buffer.
So, yeah, the, the planter, we could talk about the planter if it's movable, you know, if it's not permanent, yeah, so, I mean. But I, I think the parking needs to be out of that, out of the right of way and that, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I. I think anything is not permanent with the right machinery there. But, all right, all right, anything else, Randy?
Uh, no, I, I think, I, no, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, any other town officials? Okay, any public comments tonight? Sir, just state your name and address, please.
I'm Dan Thompson, I live on thirty-eight Beach Road. And that road from the parking to me is going to be the whole issue. And it's only about probably ten or fifteen, twenty times a year, right, July, Boil Day. They're going to park in front of those bushes, they're going to park, Southfield, that parking lot, they're going to town beach and park. I'm not, I'm a proponent of Krabby Joe's over there. But the parking is a real issue. They're going to come right down the road and that's our way out. Legally, that's our only road. They park now, we can't get by. You know, an Amazon trucks there, UPS, you're waiting. So it's, it's a one-way street, people don't even know that coming down the other way. So I'm just saying, I'm not, I, I want Krabby Joe's though. And I understand why they're trying to do that to offset the business. To me, your issue really should be, how do you manage the parking on the days that it's too much? Need some off-site parking or something like that. Anyway. It's just good parking. They're going to go right down to town beach, into my yard, across, you know, and it's no road, my yard's the turnaround. So, I mean, it's just, it's a major issue. I feel bad because I, I do well, but the docks would help offset the slump times, I guess, because the weather is dead out there, right? But the parking has to be addressed for the short period of time. So, that's my opinion. The other thing is, if you take that first dock, it's short enough to lengthen the other one, I don't even know if that's possible. But it gets it out of the line of sight. Anyway, that's for the engineer.
Thank you. I see Donna's iPhone, if you want to unmute yourself, just state your name and address first.
Donna Cabana, one forty-one Congamon Road. I've lived here for fifteen years and there's never been enough parking over there. Without the boats, additional boat slips. They've been parked all up and down Beach Road, down at the town beach, around the corner on Barbara. In my yard, they love to pull up right in my yard like it's part of the restaurant. And there's never been enough parking here, even for the restaurant. So the little right of way is going to be filled up with motorcycles. I can see the tree belt filled up with fifty motorcycles. How do you account for all that? The motorcycles that were parked all up and down the street? There's just not enough parking. I am, I don't, I, I agree to have the restaurant, sure, let them open back up. I'd love for them to be successful, but the additional boat slips, there is not enough parking to have. An additional use at this location. And I've had them parked on my yard, so I know this. I live right across the street. The house was built in nineteen ninety-one, it does not pre-exist that building, so. Fifteen years I've been. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make one comment to that?
Sure.
The Krabby Joe building, when Joe owned it. Had a restaurant capacity over two hundred. Our restaurant capacity is less than half that. So we're never going to have the kind of parking problems that they had. Because you, he was allowed to have two hundred people in there. He, he had an occupancy, I think of, I forget, it's over two hundred. And of course, he never had parking enough for two hundred, but our occupancy is based upon the available parking. Of ninety-five. So will we ever have more than ninety-five? In the wintertime, we're planning on having up to one thirty. Well, you know, and it is, it is a slow time in the winter, so I don't think, you know, hopefully we will have, you know, a hundred and thirty people there on. In the wintertime. But it's still, we're, we're, we're half the capacity. Of what it used to be and that alone should prevent a lot of the. Off-site parking problems. Which is what we do intend to monitor. Already, there's a plan. That's been submitted on that.
All right, any other public comments?
Raise your hand.
Oh, here we go, Jennifer Tivitts.
I'm glad that you're bringing all these points up because as a resident on Beach Road. We're very accustomed to all these problems that you're talking about. And I'm also concerned about not just the, the lake pollution from forty more boats. But also the noise pollution, the, of the boats, you know, coming out and, uh, from the slips. And taking off and making a lot of noise and the beach. You know, the wakes from those boats as well for people just on the beach. And this lake is a nice thing for the town and I think it's a shame to, to, to spoil it. By overcrowding and noise pollution and not enough parking. So I just want to add that I think a lot of people feel that way in the neighborhood too.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello, yes, could I speak?
Yep, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Just state your name and address, please.
Derek Cabana, five Beach Road.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I agree with a lot of the residents here, just at the marina, there's enough traffic on the lake. Enough pollution, I think that'll create traffic problems having the marina there. And yeah, and it takes away from the beach and it takes away from a lot of other things. And so I hope they just go really on the conservative side with this project. Same thing, the parking issues, there's always been problems there. So I guess if you guys are cutting the capacity in half, that seems like it's in the right direction. And that's all, I just want to make sure, I'd love to see, you know, them do something with it. But, you know, kind of on a conservative side, so that, uh, yeah, everyone can enjoy it and it's not overrun because there are days. When they plan, uh, you know, it's holiday weekend and they got a ban there and every spot is. When they plan, uh, you know, it's a holiday weekend and they got a ban there and every spot is taken. So, you know, those are the times when it's just really, really overrun.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other public comments? Okay.
It's easy to sit there and do like this, but we live out there.
No, he said the ban. He said the ban. That's right.
Yeah, it's easy to do that if you don't live out there. But in the summertime, when the Town Beach is open and it's a weekend. You can't get out of my world. And that's fine. We, we live on the lake. We're happy. But I also, times I've tried to creep out, two times last year, a little kid. Parks, because they're parked so tight along Barbara and, and in the parking for the beach parking and up our street. So what I want to know is when that overspills, because there's not enough parking in that parking lot, where are they going to go? What's, what's going to happen? So it's a real thing. It's not just us complaining, you know? It's a real concern of mine.
Why don't we continue this on? All right. We go 159 at 7:30, right? So. So we're into. Business. So why don't we put this on for, um. 7:45.
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Go through a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Hey, uh, so we convene on this at 7:45 on March 1st. Thank you. All right. Eight o'clock. One Hudson Drive. Can you public here? Yep.
I'm going to be sitting this one out, Mike. I'm going to be sitting this one out.
You're going to be?
Yeah, very best one. I didn't, I didn't read into what you had on that.
That's fine. You don't have to do it. I don't think you have to have done it beforehand. You just have to do it before we, or you know what? Actually, no, I take that back. You do have to sit it out. This is what doing it.
Jessica's designated?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, so you're.
Want to make sure.
Yep. Yep. So, um. Where did our planner? He just went through a grab, something, let me just, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I think something about jump down a window.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Because of our director of buildings, they're going to close the window.
Not from this afterthought.
Oh.
So that's it.
This is just what I was.
Excuse me, that's right.
Oh, we have an abundance.
There you go. So it's the same as this. So, okay, have it up on the screen. Actually, I think the hearing is still open, so why don't we deal with that and then, uh, we'll close it. But was there anything else?
Oh, we didn't close?
No, I just wanted to leave it open in case anything came up and then we can deal with the decision. Um, but we also wanted to look at the. Um. I think the only other, I mean, not outstanding, but the only thing that we were really spending some time on was the oil. You know, separator issue in the. Uh, are there?
Keep what was there.
I, I'm not saying it wasn't, I'm just saying that was the only thing that was at least having some discussion at the end of last meeting, is my memory. Um. Yeah. I saw Andy pop on here.
Do we have anything else?
Yep. Andy, was there anything that you needed to offer tonight before we move on to the decision?
Hi, good evening. Um, there just seemed to be a, um. Just maybe a little grammar issue here and there.
Always.
Anything's possible.
But that's what started this whole thing in the first place, right?
Well, here's what I'd say, Andy, is, um, unless you have something to add for the hearing itself, other than what we talked about. I'm going to close the hearing and we will move on to going through the decision. Um. And in talking about that, um. And so, you know, if there's. You know, I don't have a problem. We can't sit and take new evidence or, you know, new.
Right.
New discussions about stuff, but if you see something that we've missed or that, that's wrong, you can certainly jump in and, and, and mention it to us as we go along, okay?
Okay.
Um, all right. So do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Do I hear a second?
Richard Doherty, a second.
Um. Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Scott Fortin, aye.
Um, John, you don't have the. Did you have, you have that application in the original?
Hmm, I do. Okay, which means it, so this is the original permit, narrative behind it, other applications, next, we need to dig into it. Us to walk through when we get to conditions. I can just make a general note as we start to look at this document. Uh, this was, if you will. Rest into the current, uh, special permit template the planning board developed a few years back. So there's a little bit of, um, perspective, I think, often happens, in that fact, this is an existing operation, uh, making sure we, we word, uh, each component appropriately. It also made reference, the original decision, uh, was a special permit inside plan approval. Deeper within that decision makes reference to the wellhead protection district special permit. Uh, but I do bring it up to the forefront, uh, in terms of the title document. And, uh, and references elsewhere.
Okay, okay. All right. So we'll look here at page one. Let me know if there are any suggested changes. Do that.
There are space there in the first paragraph under procedural history between parcel two and the application.
Uh, I just changed that.
Okay.
That could ask. I swear this happens going into, uh, the office 365 climate and back out into work process.
Probably.
That's not going to be the last missing space you.
He's got his red squiggles.
So it's special permits.
All right, anything before I move on to page two? All right. Findings, um, anything in the general findings?
Mike, um, Andy has a business now as additional public storage, but the glass shop has a different name now. Does that cause a problem?
No, it's still owned by, it's still the same owner. Um, so I think it's, it's irrelevant and we'll address that later on if we need to, as far as that. Ability for him to lease that out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Anything in the general findings that anybody has? Okay. We'll go on to the special permit criteria, um, and actually jump ahead. To the conditions and then come back to the criteria so that we know what we're talking about when we go through the criteria. Well, until you know what you're, what you're putting in and taking out, you don't know whether they meet the criteria or not, do they? I mean, I, I'm, I'm.
Sorry, my brain is just.
That's okay. I mean, I, you know, let's go through the.
I'm already the number two is the use is reasonably compatible, so.
We'll come back. I promise we'll come back. Um, but I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same scope of, that is being changed. Before we start talking about whether it meets the special permit criteria. So, um. So I'm going to jump to the findings and then we'll go back, um. So specific findings, um.
So what page are we on?
Page three, bottom of page three.
Yep, all right. Page four.
All right, so page, going on to page four, yep.
Number one.
So on.
Three and four.
Yeah, page three or four, which part of it?
What?
Go ahead.
Item one, under specific findings.
Yes.
I question the. Second part of that. I, I thought we were enabling expansion. Uh, well, you're saying here, future storage, self-storage building construction. Uh, the, 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 the phase one and future phases. Combined may be permitted at the subject property only after submittal. To the planning board approved by the Southwick Planning Board for modification. So. It would require another modification. I, I, I was questioning the end, end of that.
But we don't have a site plan. Shows that in any way, shape or form. So I mean.
You just take that out and just say the first part of that. The proposal includes, or the existing, whatever includes, and just say that. We know we have, I mean, it's, it's, it's a requirement, I guess, then if he wants to do a phase two, he's got to do those things. I don't know. I just thought it was not necessarily.
If I could add a little texture, uh, that specific component, uh, was acknowledgement to the original special permit. Or, uh, both the votes, uh, as well as, it seems there are mid-referenced to a total square footage. Um, that had been considered for all phases. Uh, you are correct in that, that square footage is not a factor on the ground as it is today. But, uh, leave it to the board. Of the best address. Any change or any acknowledgement of that?
I, I'm just, I'm questioning the need for item one.
The original permit was for 66,000 square feet. I do have to come back for site plan review to do the second phase.
So. The proposal includes the continued use of four existing buildings for both an automotive glass shop. And self-storage facility with accessory parking. Within the area described as phase one on the planning board. Record of plans for the subject property reviewed by the board. On March 2nd, 2004. I would stop it there.
I need that 66,000 square foot number in the, in this. That's what I was originally permitted for.
It was originally permitted to. Up to 66,000 square foot. Do you want to take that limitation out?
I guess if that's in the original permit, then I would include it.
Okay.
But I, I don't know that. Have that last part in there.
So with the additional phases and just require site plan approval versus additional special permit and wellhead.
They would require. Site plan approval only.
Okay, good.
If I can, I'll, I'll vault it.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think one consideration that may come into, we'll call it the modified phase two. Uh, may be the accommodation of exterior storage, since that's been a topic of discussion. Um, at which point that draws back into the wellhead production district, uh, discussion.
Oh. Why don't we say this? All right, Marcus, how about we do this? The proposal includes the continued use of four existing buildings for both an automotive glass shop and a self-storage facility with accessory. Area described as phase one on the planning board. Record plans for the subject property reviewed by the board on March 2nd, 2000, 2004. Um, the, um. The original, um. Joe Grant, um. Original. Special permit. Grant of. Of construction. Towing up to 66,000 square feet and growth floor area remains in effect. That work for you?
Yes.
Future. Future construction. Requires. Submit to an approval by the topic planning board for. For any necessary. Modifications to the special permit site plan approval. And or wellhead district, protection district special. Along with. Now. I'm just going to keep going. Wellhead protection. And or stormwater management permit. What? No, nevermind. Future construction requires smelt to an approval by the Southwick Planning Board for any. Required permits. Or approvals at that time. How about that? Fantastic. Simpler is always better. Keep it simple, stupid. All right.
And Mike, Mike, go back to one again. It specifies, um, glass shop. So Randy, I mean, so Andy can't so contract out to anything else but the glass shop? Well, coming back to the planning board?
Right, correct. If it's going to be another use, it needs to get permission for that use so that we can assess the impact of that use. He needs to get permission for that use so that we can assess the impact of that use. In that space.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you know. Again, I don't, as we've told them, I don't. If I, you know, the wellhead stuff obviously has some impact, but assuming it's a non-impactful use, it's probably not going to be a big deal in that location. It's just. The primary thing is going to be considering the wellhead. All right. Let's see, proposals for the continued commercial. Accessory use. All right, anything with two through six?
At rural historical, right?
Thinking what out?
Rural and historic character puts in drive on.
I'm being delicate with the template.
Bringing back the steam engine. It's coming.
Are we addressing in here that, that the law has changed and commercial and retail sales are allowed now? They're not restricted?
You will find that under conditions.
Yep, under conditions, okay.
Or either you won't find it.
Right, it's, it's, it's addressed by removal.
Okay, very good.
All right, nothing on two through six. Go through seven through seventeen, end of page four. Or I don't know, it may have changed. Seven through seventeen, how about that?
Seventeen, five.
All right, hearing nothing, I'm going to move on. Eighteen through twenty. Anything? Okay, hearing nothing, I'm going to move on to the decision. Which is pretty straightforward and we'll move on to the terms and conditions, which is where the meat is. A. Standard.
So nine, ten, and eleven. Were highlighted on John's document.
All right, hold on, let's just go in order here because we got Dave and Dick who are. Only being able to look at what we have on the screen, so. Let's look at two through six. Right now. Two is pretty straightforward. Fifteen.
Three has some doctoring, of course, to the fact that this is an existing site to remain.
Okay.
But we're under. General terms and conditions, right?
That's right, item three.
Item three?
Yep, that's, I think that's good language to use in these types of. Conditions. Straightforward, five is straightforward. Oh.
Seven says a special permit shall lapse on February fourteenth.
Eight, I'm just going to put in, or a dish, or, or.
Should change the date, right?
Future improvements to the site or new uses.
Excuse me, should be fifteenth. Don't you say, Marcus?
Oh, it should be today's date, yes. Hey, I'm assuming we got past the others.
All right.
Is that, is that the right language? It implies. Why is there a lapse? Shall not include such time required or pursue or await the determination of appeal reference in blah blah blah. If construction, except for a good cause or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has begun. By such state for good cause. But we're not constructing anything.
No, on top of that, my circuit breaker blew when I read that sentence. My mental circuit breaker. That was, that was last night, so I apologize. I went, meant to look at another decision to try to clean up that language.
I don't think seven, seven doesn't apply.
Oh, you're, essentially, it, you know, the, it becomes a.
You have to put it in every single decision, though. You have to, I think you're required to.
Well, what does he do to meet, how, what does he have to do to meet this requirement and he has to construct some?
Business tomorrow.
Wouldn't be construction if, if operation or something were.
So here's, it seems weird. If he does not. Open for business tomorrow. And. This doesn't get, in, in, it, the business does not continue. I think this permit lapses and the original one goes into effect. If this is not, if this is not effectuated in some way. I don't think the permit goes into effect. All he has to do, because he's not building anything, is.
What we should say, what does he have to do? We should say what he has to do.
Well, I, I don't.
He has to continue operation of the.
Special permission lapse on February fifteen, twenty-four.
Operations do not continue. Practice.
I don't know, I've never seen this included in a modification of.
Military angry birds.
I'm not.
Yeah, military angry birds, interesting.
I'm, I'm, I don't know. Someone can appeal this, they can appeal the modification, but they can't appeal. Permit. I would say the modification of the special permit. Shall lapse on whatever. Well.
That's fine, the modification of special permit. Shall lapse. If not. Shall lapse on February fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Kill me, Marcus, kill me.
No, I'm not, I, we should, was this in?
It's a mass general law that, that, and I just, I don't. Remember which one.
I doesn't count if there's an appeal, that stays in there, right? Say if, if, if operation. I want to, this nine.
No other stuff, we have to top of his head.
I get a little bit of language. Out of section nine?
Yeah, no, I got it.
I figured it's.
I'm just trying to.
You.
Oh, I did a word search, if you want the paragraph, like.
Actually, I just have to look, we got, she provided special part, so that's a question, one, three years.
Structure.
All right. I'm just going to use my version. Getting longer. Modification of the special permission shall lapse on February fifteen, twenty twenty-four, essential use of the modified terms and conditions, it's not comments. By that date. But shall that include such? Such date. Shall not include such time. Shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of a field reference in MGL chapter forty-eight. For good cause or in the case of construction, if construction has begun by such state for good. That's just the language from the statute, so we're going to leave that in, even though there's no construction. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic.
Definitely.
All right, let's look at nine, ten, and eleven.
Is there new ones?
These are site-specific.
Marcus, these reflect modifications. To the.
Original.
Conditions from the original program.
So this, all the text here, is a modification to the.
No, there are, you, my, Marcus, if I look at your shoulder, you have a printout that doesn't show the track edits.
Yeah. We have here.
But you do have inserts to the letter.
All right, we're on nine, ten, and eleven. There you go.
So nine, there's no change to, yes, that's, that's cool, good.
It was just for me to write down.
Absolutely.
Good with nine. Ten. And eleven. Sure, not missing anything, all right.
Stuff passed down.
Terms and conditions for a special permit within the IR zone. And this is sort of meshing the formats from. General permit and. How we do it now. This is more of a throwback, but keep it in.
No change to one.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Look at one through six and anybody tell me if there's any issues with the changes on those. I could talk about three.
The department, the fire department, police department necessary, we already have. On page six, the duly authorized agents of the town have the right to enter. Except in the case of the emergency. Specifically want them to be provided. Special access.
I think, I mean, they already have, I'm assuming, so Andy, I assume that's the case.
What is that again?
Fire, fire and police, fire and police access.
Yes. They might, they might need to be reminded that they have access, but we give it to them every couple of years. And they're surprised every time.
All right. I'd say just leave that in there, I'm not too worried about it.
Yeah, nope. They have their own code.
Thanks. Yeah, I don't think we do have to leave in the, you know. Demonstrated means the security and management. Andy to plan. You know what, I, why don't we just do this? I assume it was provided before accuracy permit was done, so why don't we say. Be maintained and shall be provided to the Southwick Planning Board upon request. Since I assume that that exists and was provided to satisfy that condition originally. Else on one through six?
Number five.
Sure.
I thought we were going to allow other uses. Says no activity other than the related activities. Where the automotive glass shop and the rental of storage units shall be allowed.
Under this permit.
Under this permit.
So, again, I think it's more grammatical than anything else. You know, I think we're clearing up that this permit only allows that. It's, the permit doesn't have broad enough language that prohibits any other use, you know, going forward. Andy could certainly come back and get a modification. To allow a different use.
Can we put under this permit upfront so it doesn't get misinterpreted?
Sure. Under this special permit. No activity other than the related activities for the automotive glass shop and the rental of storage units shall be allowed. That were.
Unfortunately, the rental of storage units, it's more like the operation of the storage facility. Because we do a little more than just renting units.
That's fine, yeah. Operation of a self-storage, what a. Or facility.
Storage.
Because you use self-storage facility in the next sentence. Because you use self-storage facility in the next sentence.
Yep.
Things that can't be done.
Under the special permit, no activity other than the related activities for the automotive glass shop and the operation of the self-storage facility shall be allowed. Okay, with that?
I guess.
Five, six are good.
Again, are we going to say under this special permit outside storage shall not be permitted? I don't know. I mean. We were opening the door to the fact that. If there was a request, we could look at. Non-motorized, storage of non-motorized. Vehicles, whatever.
It's already, it's already kind of stated in there. Outside storage will not be permitted without the submittal. If you inverse that statement, outdoor storage is permitted with the submittal. Of a plan is basic. That's what number seven saying. It can be, it can happen. It's okay the way it is to me.
All right.
Because it kind of says, it kind of says it is allows if I submit a plan and you guys accept the plan.
Here, Andy, I'm going to do something that's going to help you, so hold on a minute before you keep talking.
Michael's guard is trying to help you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
This special permit. Outside storage. Is not permitted. But may. Be permitted.
With the submittal and planning.
Yeah, in the future. With the submittal and planning board approval of both modification to this modified special permit, blah, blah, blah. All right, everybody okay with that?
Awesome.
Okay. I think I helped clarify that, Andy. All right. Eight and nine, oh, we got like eight through 14.
Nine applicable still. So he applies for a building permit, and I don't know why he would. Oh, excuse me. The second half, the last sentence in nine, I believe has been in. Expression.
No, it was the.
That's right.
You were your head, Matt, though.
So do we, do we need nine? And further construction about him coming back.
Fair enough. I think we can actually take away. Nine at this point in time. That is not. There's no filling permit that's going to be applied for. Yep. All right. Not so the former, now we're going to dissolve it up, but former. All right.
Number 10 we're on.
Sure. But nine for folks playing from home.
Oh.
Building roof.
10 is now nine.
Shall be pitched, metal roof shall have or develop a flat finish, regular usage. Within how many years to reduce layer?
If considerate, so the original permit made reference to people peak roofs and having a specific. Pitch to the. The request was to eliminate that relatively steep and go to a shallower pitch. You can build back in. Peak if that's amenable to everyone participating in suspension. And one of the proposals that Mr. Riden submitted for the last meeting had some language from a builder. Where they utilize. Galvanized roofing and then within several seasons, it oxidizes to a flat grade finish. Might paraphrase that correctly, Andy. I can hope the correspondence has needed.
Yeah, I think he said within two to three years, it pretty much dulls down.
Anybody have a problem if that's the material that's used?
He further went on to say the only place he saw that sort of language was very close to an airport. Because with the flat roof, the only place you're going to get a reflection from the sun is back up near the sun.
All right, so. Better roof shall have or develop a flat finish through regular usage within five years to reduce layer.
Do we need it?
I don't think so.
Jessica's thinking, we don't need it. Do we want to?
Until the master plan approves a new airport in town. That's right.
Do you want to do a peak?
Just.
I think you should delete it. He's going to have to come in for a new permit if he's going to build any new buildings. Right? And we can talk about pitch and color of the building.
Delete this whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Fantastic. For two off.
Now 11 is nine.
Correct.
Good.
All right. So. 11 through. 16 for those of you here and nine through 14 for those at home.
13 can go away. The old 13. All plantings prepared. Superment has been issued.
Yeah, 13 is gone. No planting.
No, I think, I think it should change to all plantings. Shown on the fight, shown on the. Well. Say to remain, but.
We're dragging this on, aren't we?
Yeah, we can take that out. All right.
Thank you. 31 with the fencing.
We don't really need. 12 right now, 10, our work shall be in compliance with any order conditions issued by the South. But there's no work that. That can go. Yeah.
How about 11? Each building should be clearly marked with a number or letter as a. You got to keep that one.
Yeah.
Get rid of that at some point. All right, what are we doing with the fencing?
We're changing it a little bit to say it doesn't have to be around the whole property, just what has been constructed.
Yeah, so that's fine. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Are the, are the gates decorative iron?
They are decorative aluminum because it's so much lighter.
The gate shall be decorative, scratch iron.
Yeah, it says decorative iron or similar material.
Never mind.
Yeah.
All right.
And none of it needs to worry about being in place prior to the issuance of the.
Oh. Jessica's saying take out the reference to the occupancy permit. Since it's already occupied.
Hey.
As long as he shows up to work.
How long is this meeting going? We might not be able to go to work tomorrow.
We usually go to 11.
As an aside. You know, Diane, you're, you're, you're going to be first on the next meeting, just so you know. After going through this, I think we're going to just start adjusting.
But she was just an additional member of the planning board now.
Yeah, I feel like it by association.
I don't think she wants that.
So long we just.
Guilty by association.
All right.
Just guilty.
So.
So we increase the parking spaces, the 13. We're removing one accessible space and that would be. Cool. Okay, they're all 10 by 20, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, did you keep? Yeah, you kept. Anybody have anything with the remaining conditions in this section? Knowing that the wellhead stuff is later.
Looks sweet.
Okay, that's what I wanted to do.
Did we make it to page? Oh, wow. 19 is. All about lighting.
Yeah, I said to myself, I don't need a copy.
So we made it to the vote to stake out Mr. Sutton's name.
I'd like to not accept this tonight because there's been so many changes in here. I know that's kind of a little bump in your, your road right there. You guys, you guys are just reading it for the first time tonight as well. And I certainly appreciate it all. But if there's any, you know, we'd just like to read through it a second time. I got it at 4:30 today and I had a college class at five. So I've been reading this while in class and watching your Zoom meeting and the class meeting. Yeah.
Former teacher, I didn't want to hear that.
All right. Well. No. So. You don't have to. I just probably would have.
I would have loved to get it done tonight too, Mike. I, and, but, I mean, we've really.
It's not, it's not. Yeah, that's fine. I just would have cut it down a little earlier than, so. No, but that's fine. It's about Sutton.
Ow.
That's, that's all it takes.
He give me out.
All it takes. Just remember that. That's all it takes.
That's damn.
Yeah.
We have to take page nine and page 10.
All right. With the wellhead. Anybody have? That's still keeping the spill containment system.
Right?
Yep.
Oh, three. Yeah, there's a reference.
And then you take out the thing in the beginning. Do.
Number one, because they're not allowed to store any of that stuff. Oh.
Glass shop has a certain amount of stuff and we did, we did provide that in the past. I mean, it's probably less than a gallon between the primers and stuff, but it's there. And that's kind of boilerplate and all the other permits I read.
Yeah.
Pretty great, every permit.
We just took out in three, you adjusted the building from the house. Occupants.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was trying to do.
We're going to keep it on.
So. That's fine for tonight. I would say go back and look at those one through 17 special permit conditions knowing now. And we can talk about it one last time.
I had a change in one of those.
And that'll be a lovely thing to discuss at the next meeting.
No, we're going to vote on it next meeting.
Correct, after we make your change at the next meeting.
Okay, I'll give it to you and then you can make it. Does mean Sutton gets to live for another night or am I getting taken me out?
So. All right.
You might make it.
Where is?
I want to think about my life. The agenda. Oh, we're at 8 o'clock.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. All right, so. We'll put that in. On routine business for the next one and finish that thing up. Dreams West. You have the letter from Randy or email or whatever it is. Do you have a letter?
Yes.
All right, pull that up and we'll quickly deal with that.
Did Randy comment on that one? Releasing a covenant?
Yeah.
Letter from. DPW Director Randy Brown to the planning board dated February 14, 2022. The planning board at Department of Public Works reviewed the request from your realty holdings to update the covenant move bond. Covenant. By releasing lots 15, 18 and incorporating lot 25. DPW is in agreement with the developer's request. And that the value of lot five exceeds the value of the remaining work. Remaining work was detailed on the attached punch list given to the contractor on March 18, 2021. Many of the items in the punches are complete and DPW estimates the value of remaining work to be less than $40,000. Having the discussions from the board, any questions, let me know sincerely, Randy Brown.
Okay. And.
Lot 25.
I mean, especially, I don't know what lot 25 is, but something, you know. It's going to be worth a lot more than $40,000, so. Do I have, do I hear a motion to allow that substitution?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second?
I'll take a second.
The roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
That's in her eye.
Even Sutton, I.
He's being a I.
A and R.
Shall I provide those documents to town council for review on format prior to. Able to carry that A and R. Fred Jackson Road. One second. Here. Mine's got scream. Hey, look at that. Taking a young cover. Yes, he's so he's still alive. So we're looking at 110 and 166 Fred Jackson Road. For land. A portion of the land of the Walter Johnson Trust is supposed to be transferred to the white lock. Box, I should say. 166, different acreage and remaining land sufficient. To me. Conforming to the minimum dimensional requirements remains at the Walter Johnson. Conforming to the minimum requirements remains at the Walter Johnson Trust Park. So this is a pretty straightforward. I transfer no change to frontage.
Uh, I don't know. It's ten o'clock. I forgot. I think we endorse, we make a motion to endorse the approval not required plan for one sixty-six.
Are you making?
You wanna change something?
I'm making it. All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
We're touching, right?
Even Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
All right, that's all set.
Aye, 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 aye.
In formal discussion of the draft major development bylaw. We're there.
Whoa.
Mister, uh, excuse me.
Before ten o'clock, just on the record.
Chairman Doherty, do we want to give an official time, um, at the next meeting for Mr. Riordan to come back to review?
I was just gonna do it in the routine business. Um.
At the end of the meeting.
So we might not have to skip class next time.
Well, it's gonna be a routine business. We can pop it in at any point. Um. Uh, is, is Andy still on there? Yeah. Andy just touched base with, um, John Goddard before the next meeting and we'll have a better sense about what's going forward and what's not.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Yep. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. Um. Okay. So you should have in your package.
It's a plus one minute.
Um, you should have in your packets. Um, a. Sure, a, a proposal that sort of sketches out a. A, for lack of a better word, screening process. And. The biggest thing I think to talk about tonight is just the. Structure and process, and we can deal with some of the substance later. Um, but the idea being. So if we walk through this, you know, purpose is purpose, um. Applicable proposals. And we could talk about the trip number, but I had, I, you know, one about the trips. There's one about. Um, square footage for new buildings and one about a square footage for existing buildings. Okay, I think those are the only three that sort of. Remain after the last discussion as far as, you know, things that would trigger. Um. A little bit more information upfront. Um, C would be the application information. Um, again, we could talk about this. This was in the original file up proposal. They just had a little bit more information in. The application then is required by. A, uh, in a, in a normal special permit. It's not all that significant, I think. It just gives a little bit more sense of. The building itself, I think, and the impact on the abiding properties, as well as the name of the tenant and, you know, any phase construction plans. Uh, so you get a sense, given that it's a large development of, of how things are gonna go. Um. It has a community meeting requirement which would give. Um, you know, the application will have been in at that point in time. The materials will be there, uh, to be reviewed by people and in, as the planning board. And before the public hearing opens, you at least have the opportunity to get the input from. You know, uh, community meeting, changes could be made, so where the issues are and, and focus the planning board, uh, when the public hearing opens. And then the screening part of this is E, which is the comprehensive impact analysis, which is, um. You know, if there is an application that meets the requirements of B, you then. The town planner will assess. Those impacts and determine whether. Um, comprehensive impact analysis. Is required on one of those topics. And make a recommendation to the board. The board would then, you know, vote on that and decide whether. They wanna see a comprehensive impact analysis prior to. Opening up the public hearing. And. If that's needed. I just took from what Diane had said and popped that in there for. What would be requested for those particular topics. Um. So again, this would be simply. Trying to preload the information. On a major development, which would be a rare occurrence. Get the information out there to both the board and the community before a public hearing opens so that. Process becomes, I think, a little bit more efficient and less contentious ideally. That's part of it is. All right. I don't know. I, I, I. I gotta look back at what the timing requirements exist on a regular special permit and how quickly they have to be processed. And I, I just can't remember that. So I'm not sure. Adding a clock to it is the right call or not. Um, I didn't think so, but I wanted to just go back and look. Um, I mean, you know, there's arguments for and against it. It. It, uh. You know, moves things along and requires an applicant to move things along. Um, but at the same time, it puts some pressure on the board to get it done within a certain period of time. So, uh, you know. Uh, I just at least wanted to add that in there for consideration. And then. It struck me that. The financial surety bond for, you know, an abandoned building, that could probably be done. In a separate. Bylaw rather than this. I'm not sure. You know, uh, that could probably be treated separately and then a cap. You know, that may be something you want. And again, as a separate bylaw that says, you know. Do you have a property over, you know, and you gotta figure out the square footage, but, or acres or whatever it is, but, you know, property over five acres. Probably shouldn't have impervious surface more than forty percent, right? I mean, that's, you know, there's gotta be a certain size you get to where.
Impervious.
You don't want.
Roof, tar, sidewalk.
Right.
So only forty percent of the property.
Right. Right. I mean, I, I, I think when you're dealing at a town like this, which is a farming community. You know, you're dealing. Correct.
Yeah.
That don't write to farm. Lot of land. And if you're trying to preserve some of that, I, you know, I'm not sure what, what properties. That are over five acres, ten acres, whatever you wanna set that limit to be. Would you expect to see forty percent or more of impervious surface? I mean, that's a significant amount of impervious surface that you're putting on.
Any industrial lot? Or would I, I, I'm pulling into Hudson Drive. I wouldn't expect to see any green. I expect to see metal buildings and a roof and I see it in working lots.
Storage areas.
You know, and then the occasional, okay, we have to have a green island here. So, no. And, and that, in that case, no.
So putting aside Hudson. I don't know how many of those properties are over five acres, you know, other than the Tilkon and, and.
Originally.
Wally's. I'm not sure how many are over five acres.
You're saying you're just tossing that five acre number out as a.
Well, I'm tossing it out almost as a minimum because when you, you get below that. You know, you're, you don't wanna do something that's gonna prevent some of the stuff on College Highway, right? It may have some, some acreage and, and have a bunch of different retail and whatever else, right? So. I think at some point. It gets too low. Or even a, you know, um, so I, I, I think it gets too low, but. Using five as, as a potential minimum, I think. I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I, I just, I wonder if that's.
It's gotta be researched. I would think there'd be some environmental. Stuff out there, other communities, if you Google it.
But aside from Hudson, I mean, I think that keeps the, I think that fits with what the. You know, town is designed to be. It keeps. Well, it keeps, it keeps some of the rural rural, right? I mean, you're not taking out something that, uh. Um, one of these large tracks and, and filling it with impervious surface, or at least, you know, on College Highway or on fifty-seven or on whatever. You're, you're at least factoring in that. You know, there should be some.
That, 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 that's your ma- major travel route, sorry, to drive customers for some, for, for a strip mall or for shopping, a shopping center or.
Well, and I.
Car lot or.
You'll see what I put under there is whether, whether, you know, when you have a re, you know, um. Strip mall type of, whether that should be an increased number, right? Whether you should give a little more leeway for that. But, you know, again, I, I, it's, it's the conversation. Let, but let's focus more. I kinda put those as an aside. Let's focus more on the. Structure of. That screening process. I mean, is that? Something that seems. Beneficial to the board? Mike, was this sent out electronically or I might have missed it if it was? No. Okay. You know what? Actually, hold on.
No, I don't.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I don't know. I, uh, yeah. Um, you know what? Let me do this, Dave.
Screening process. I was gonna keep just saying this.
Um. And that's my bad. I don't know.
Community meeting?
That's right.
Yeah. That's my screen. Yeah, community meeting. Well, I think, well, here it is.
And Diane, if you wanna jump in with anything, you should feel free to as well.
I, this community meeting, uh, we didn't talk about that.
You guys wanna come sit up here?
And, uh. We didn't talk about a handbook or something that the C part of the problem, this, uh.
Watch out.
Description of what goes into report. I have nothing. Well, is in a handbook. And it was a one-page. Uh. Describing the thresholds that if they're tripped. It triggers the, uh. Your need for a comprehensive impact analysis. Here's, or study or statement. Whichever we use.
Give me one second. I'm just trying to pull. Oh.
You want study or you wanted an analysis? Originally it was a statement.
I called it a statement.
And then a lot of towns call them studies.
I can see it.
CIS.
So.
Mike liked analysis.
Today.
Okay. Okay. Analysis paralysis.
All right. I did this in a. Three and a half minutes, uh, when it's green two meetings.
Explains all the little spaces. There was nothing in it. The email I sent. A minimal blank hours. That's kinda pretty vague.
So.
Maybe one now that now, maybe one.
So we talked about this last time. You know, I think I brought it up. Um, as a, as a, as a plan, whatever letter we're on now, uh, to the, what we talked about last time. Um, what occurred to me the other day was that it's similar in some degree to. We had looked at a, um. I'll get wrapped into the same thing, but there was a document from down in Virginia that we had looked at when the whole Parvada thing was going on, of how they did stuff down there for one of those proposals. And they had, I know I used the C word.
Flatlands or the hill towns?
I don't know.
Just check.
But it, it does.
It was right near Rich.
Disregard. Disregard. I didn't wanna bring this up, but disregard.
But you did.
The project. So the way they did it down there is.
For another large project.
Yeah, for the project. I think they do this for large projects. They go through and they have their planner run through a number of things.
Yes.
Before it even gets to public hearing.
Yes.
And they, and they do a, and they do a presentation, not a presentation, but they do a report. They get to the board. So the board has, you know, a good sense of what's going on. That seemed to dovetail pretty well with some of the things that Diane was saying about, you know, whether there should be, uh, uh, you know, this impact statement. Um, and frankly, having the impact statement done by the applicant puts more of the work on the applicant than it does on the board, which I think is useful.
John.
But again, this is.
This should be done by a third-party consultant, not by the applicant.
Well, the applicant would use whoever they want. I assume they would use a, you know, the various experts that are involved in their project. Sure. But. In my mi- in my head, and I think John agrees with me, but he can certainly speak up. This is a rare occurrence. It's not, I mean, this is not like, it, he's not gonna have to do five of these years.
And it's, if it's industrial and, 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 uh, business, it's not on much property. We only have. Very low percentage of the town.
Correct.
That is in that zone, but that reference is not here anymore.
What reference?
Industrial and business.
Whatever was in a purpose is sort of irrelevant to the, I mean, the purpose doesn't guide. You need it outside of purpose. So we can put it in somewhere else, but.
But it's not in here anymore.
And we can certainly adjust that. Um. Um, again, I did it in twenty-something minutes, so there's, there's probably things that are, yeah, missing. Um.
Several.
But, um, and here, Dave, I can keep going.
Yep.
That's, I think, where the, I forget if there was any community meeting stuff in what you had Diane. Maybe you didn't. You had the roundtable.
Correct.
Um, that's, they have a community meeting that's done in a lot of towns, um, you know, for large projects. Um, and we took, I, you know, had it in my mind for marijuana stuff too, because that's required here for. Any of the marijuana cultivation projects, you have to do a community meeting before that. So, um. Uh, you know, I, it strikes me that it's a useful exercise in trying to narrow down what the issues are in not having. A contentious first meeting, but. Um, you know, I at least wanted to get that in there and get thoughts. With the guy, with the. All of this in my mind, my entire focus. In looking at Diane's stuff and what my thoughts on it are, are, is this going to help the process for the board? Any type of application? And I think the answer is yes. I think front loading is helpful for a number of different reasons. But, you know, so that's how I've always thought about it. It doesn't. It's not prohibiting development. It's not causing a huge illness. Community meeting, I mean, how much extra cost does that to a developer?
It's gonna save them a lot of.
You show up, you have three people.
Depends on what you're spending.
Well.
Mentally or, or monetary.
But, I mean, wouldn't, if I'm, if I'm a developer, right? I'd rather come to a community meeting, sit in this room. Get the feedback. Evaluate it, adjust if necessary, and then go into a public hearing with that. You know, that's the same way I deal with. I, I, I like doing my work rather than criminal work because I get to know what the other side's gonna say. Before I step into a courtroom, right? I don't necessar- I don't like to ask the questions. I don't know the answers to. So I'd rather know all the information. And then show up at the public hearing and be able to address that. I think it's, I think it's a lot less. You know, potentially emotional, and I think it's a lot narrower in the way issues get dealt with.
That would have to be a pretty large, pretty large development coming in to trigger something like that.
To trigger what?
The, the community meeting.
It, uh, the only three requirements, and again, uh, you know, they're not set in stone, but the only three that I remember. Any kind of openness to from the last meeting where. Marcus had. Talked about the traffic count. I don't know if there was unified agreement on that one.
Marcus talks about traffic counts on anything.
I, I.
Yes.
But so.
I changed my mind on that.
So there's a traffic count one. There's a new development above a certain square footage of impervious surface. And there's a, uh, addition above a certain. Square footage, because I think you give a little bit of a break to an existing business who has, who just wants to add on versus the new development. He just wants to add on versus the new development.
We didn't say impervious surface, we said gross square footage.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Of the floor, to both.
Did I?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Which is what it was.
That may have been what it was, so.
Well, I sent you an email, Michael. And uh, did some more research. And I did change my mind on the traffic, but building size. There's several thresholds. That are out there, and I think. The one that Diane's been using, the sixty thousand is reasonable. Looking at the range.
So what is your?
It ranges.
And that's just the trigger.
It ranges from twenty thousand to a hundred thousand. The Mass DOT uses for their environmental, require an environmental impact statement. They require a hundred thousand before they trigger a study.
And can you just clarify what it is your current position is on a trip trigger?
Trick trigger?
Two thousand, he said.
Trick trigger is two thousand new average daily trips.
New.
New average daily trips.
And then he added a.
That's something that's.
So not somebody currently has nineteen hundred and they're doing something that adds a hundred, we're saying two thousand new.
And he added a hundred new parking spaces.
A hundred new motor vehicle parking spaces.
Cause he likes his parking.
Because that generates impervious surface. And the average retail building is forty thousand square feet. Require. One parking space for every two hundred square feet, so if you do the math. You trip that threshold.
And again, let's just, so.
That showed up in several places, the parking spaces.
You said a hundred new parking spaces?
Yeah.
Well, the range is one hundred to three hundred.
So let's just back up to.
I went with the lowest hundred.
You know, what this means, right, this is. If you meet one of these requirements. What you have to do is, uh, there were additional things to submit, a- again, we can talk about it, I don't think it was that onerous. And, um. Hold a community meeting. And then do the screening process with the planner as far as whether you need to provide. Any kind of impact statement, that's the only three things. That meeting that requirement would get.
That's right, community meeting.
You've got a community meeting? Um, yeah, I'm willing to listen to anything, but my my thought was, uh, I think the only thing I put in here was having. Representative from the uh applicant, uh, you know. Engineer, landscape architect, you know, whoever the. Who's running that uh tenant, if that's somewhat different, uh, here, you know, you probably do it here. Uh, set aside a certain amount of time, and, you know, what, you know, the application will have already been in. So.
So it will be, it will be held here in 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 the planning board, we're only just open up to public comment.
Correct, yeah. Gives you the opportunity to address, you know, or at least understand what the community issues are. You know, like a pre-hearing hearing. That we don't have to deal with. You know, it it allows. Um. Allows a narrowing down of the issues before it gets to us, that's my idea, I mean, but.
What would be the order of operations, though, for. Along with the submission of an application, you're gonna have to start the process of a community meeting. And upon submission of an application. We'll have to just, the town planner will have to decide whether the CIA or CIS is. Necessary, is the idea that that would be available for the community meeting?
I think probably not, because I think realistically, though you could, I mean, I I just, I was trying not to have. Too much time before you got to the actual public hearing, but I certainly, you certainly could. Um.
Well, you're mentioning the marijuana. Process of the community meeting, so we might be able to pull out some of that.
Yeah, but what I don't like about that, I I don't, what I just gotta get straight in my head, I just didn't have it while I was sitting there, is. Is there a requirement on, the the requirement on the cell towers? Is there a requirement on a regular special permit application for how quickly you have to take it up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Once in a, that's the thing, you gotta watch the application.
Correct, that's what I was worried about.
You gotta watch, once an application is clocked in. With the clerk.
You have a certain amount of.
You have a certain amount of time that have open a hearing on it.
So for, but the these two different items, one says along with the submission and one says upon submission, so. You're you're indicating that it's all gonna start at the time.
Well, I think.
The person walks in, but do we want them submitting an official application prior to a community meeting where they have the oppo- opportunity to do that? And if we're gonna have a community meeting, don't we want the details from the CIS available?
Kind of like having a public hearing.
But here's the chicken, no, but here's the chicken in the end, right? Wanna have a community meeting that has information available. You gotta figure out how to do that without an application being in.
Right.
So that's the issue, right, is, but if you have the application in, then you have something for people to review and talk about at the community meeting.
These these triggers that we keep throwing around, now, if somebody down the road has already done it X amount of time ago. Can they use that, or every time you do this, they have, somebody have to go out and have a whole new study done on something?
I I I mean, as you saw with, um. What are you, well, we talked about it with Depot, right, there was. Studied on that intersection in that area that I, we had no problem with, right, I mean, that's fine.
Same thing with the C word. Yeah, there were studies that were done before by the by the state.
If if.
So they can, they can go back in time.
Within a reasonable period of time.
Correct, well, what's that reasonable period?
So we decide.
Because it's not like they've done all the time.
That's what the town planner would have to evaluate and decide if they need something more.
If the stuff is out of date, so to speak, you know. Multiple doors, they might have a new traffic tower.
And then the town planner will.
Well. You know, those things get run.
We're instituting a process here. Is this process gonna function? Even if it's just once in a blue moon?
I don't.
But that's, I've.
It's a fair, so I think, if you talk about the language that I use, I may have screwed it up, but my intention was. You should try to move things along, when you submit your application, at the same time. You should be telling states and times that your people are available so that we can get that thing together, right, that was the. Language along with or whatever I use.
Who's gonna run this public hearing? Over the community meeting?
Yeah.
They, they. Both proponents.
It's the same, again, I I mean, it's, we've done it twice.
So we're we're not involved in it.
We can certainly show up, we can certainly monitor it, um.
You can't all show up.
Yeah, correct, well, no, that's not true, we could, we don't have.
As long as we don't deliberate.
Um, but. Um, no, I mean, I I think it works perfectly fine with marijuana, I heard no complaints about the marijuana stuff, um, I don't know, you know. I've bet you one, so I don't know how they go, but I haven't heard any complaints about them. We've had two of them. So.
I think instead of the word. Application, you use proposal, because use proposal up here. For your threshold, and that gets away with the town clerk. Having something stamped in and we have a clock running.
No, and I, again, I couldn't remember the timeframe off the top of my head when I was doing it, so I I personally am open to.
No, I would say proposal.
But you, but again, that, that. Push and pull, you you need. The information to have a meaningful community meeting, so how do you get that information before the application is submitted?
Well.
Again, you know, you figure that out, but I think that I general idea of. Front-load that information. At the community meeting, you've now educated the community, you've now provided a. A lot of information upfront to the board, and I think that makes things go. More efficiently and smoothly.
There could be the guidebook that you were talking about, Marcus, for the applicant. Be prepared to answer these kinds of questions. Or provide these studies, they can be asked to provide those upfront if they're available, if they're easily available. For that meeting.
Yeah, I I thought we were gonna take this comprehensive impact analysis and put that in a. Guidebook or a handbook, handbook.
Oh, I, again.
And then it would just be referred to because.
I.
I think we're trying to get this into a short form that will. Go through town meeting. Uh, I guess, you know, we have passed long documents, complicated things at town meeting, but.
I think we passed about ninety pages worth of bylaws at the last town meeting, so I think we can do it, but. Um, again, I was doing it quickly, I have no problem with that idea of using a regulation or a guidebook for that, I simply was cutting and pasting things. From what Diane had into the. Impact statement and what it should contain, in that particular, I mean, I I don't think I, yeah, I might have deleted a few things that were infallible, um. And I certainly want to talk about the must consult with language, um, but other than that, I, you know, we can certainly go through that. And if see if anything that jumped out at me as usual.
And you added, I mean, on the thresholds, you added three, you added the. Expansion of an existing building.
He changed it, he broke it out, basically.
We need to look at that a little more closely because. You know.
I just think that should be a bigger number than the. First one.
That's, that's.
We've gotta give our businesses that are here the opportunity to grow. That's why they came here in the first place.
Right, and they've already established themselves, presumably what they're growing is not the same. Impact on on services and whatever else, you know, number of employees, whatever, it's not the same as a new business, so.
You gotta have a bigger break, cause, you know, you gotta look at that fine line between is it worth it just moving the hell out or putting up with the reduction of what they wanted?
Right. Um.
And you lose it.
And and the question is, is it, is it. Extension of the this additional. An existing building for a separate standalone building on a different lot.
You know, if it's a different lot, it's a different.
Different.
If it's the same, if it's the same company, it's the same company.
Well, yeah, I forget, number three then needs to be.
Cause you have, you have companies out there that build campuses, and they have multiple buildings that aren't connected.
I thought I tried to address that, maybe I didn't do a good job, but, um.
Still, it's still the expansion of the business, not the building.
I think I used to wear subject property or properties with the idea being that if the same owner owns contiguous properties. You know, I'm not sure you make them have to mine those properties into one to do this, I think that's fine.
What was your thinking about? A little walkway with a roof over it, connecting.
Within the prior years, why do you need a number of prior years?
I do not want, um, you to break out a project into phases to get around the final, right?
Yeah.
So that's why I set that up.
Have you got a reference for years, what what will you use?
I don't, I mean, I, um. Um, no, I I at least I at least a couple.
And a seven or a question mark? Two questions.
But I I you wanna protect against that. That idea, cause that's all it's gonna cost you, it's a hundred seventy-five bucks and I'm not kidding, right, to split it out into two different. Applications. So, um. I mean, what's the thought process on the general scheme of this?
Keep it short.
Is it more?
Get it into a handbook if possible.
For you as far as. You know, uh. Scheme for these type of projects and how to deal with them?
Diane?
Is this, is this set up? With the sort of. You know. Triggers. That would trigger a a community meeting and a potentially. Um, a next statement, or at least the review to see whether one's needed.
Mm-hmm.
Is that structure more palatable to you than? What we had talked, what had been submitted before?
Said, definitely sounded better.
I agree, much better.
What?
Um. Okay, all right, Jessica?
Yeah, we're getting there.
So when do we open a public hearing on this?
Uh, we gotta do it soon.
So we close a public hearing on this.
What, you know, the.
Get it on a town meeting.
When we need to get in.
So, the quick answer is, you know, I went through with Michelle this morning, and I believe my calculation was off, so I need to sit down with Carl now. To make sure his aligns with my understanding.
Do we get the same dispensation that we get on the annual report?
I doubt it.
No.
I think that might be a little bit lofty.
All right, all right.
What's our, what's the short timeframe?
We gotta have hearings in March, we should have a hearing in March. And you should up and have it ready in early April.
Well, it's usually like April first or second or something like that, where you have to submit. Bylaws that you want on, or warrants.
That's right, they're they're drafting up their information to select for, uh, level. So we need to close, I'm gonna call it, I haven't seen it as the. April.
If any select board members on the meeting on Zoom know the answer to this, they are free to jump in, not speaking to anyone in particular, though. Um.
It can be done.
So, we have a, we have a March first, we have a March. Right, so fifteen, then a March twenty ninth.
So March first is out.
Um.
Better decide how you're gonna do it, so are you gonna accept? Comments and you're gonna redo this, I mean, this is, this is it right now, right, this is the, this is the document.
Yeah, and I, this just got to you today, I think, taking the time to look at it, and. I'm hoping at the next meeting, we can spend a little time at the end of it to try to get a better working product. To go into a hearing on the fifteenth, um, and open up a hearing on the fifteenth. And then.
Yeah, we got to.
And then I think we also, between this and the and the cell tower, um. You know, we gotta figure out. What we can get done, um, and how how quickly it goes, so.
Yeah, the cell tower could go, go next year, probably. Now you got the short-term rental, which is over next year.
Um, so those two things, I think, I, you know, I think the cell tower needs to get on this meeting, so we gotta deal with that. If we need to do a working session, I think we'd have to do that, um.
Do we have our drive test results in?
Uh, no, they have, uh, completed the drive test, uh, he's doing an overlay right now with J S information.
So we have something on March fifteenth or so on that?
I can't make any promises, but that would be the actual.
We will hold a hearing until April.
No, we were.
Yeah.
No, I think we have, probably have something at the next week, right?
I'd assume so.
Right, the March first.
Oh.
So.
So March fifteenth meeting could be interesting.
I I think. The goal will be to try to clear out most things for the March fifteenth meeting. So.
It's a late night.
Um. But I also think.
The other suggestion has been made that we would meet more often.
Well, I think, you know, almost similar to the budget process when they do it, that you may have to throw in a working session sometime in March to get. Through that. Issue.
I already got you primed for that.
So.
What, you need a budget?
No, a working session.
We just have a regular meeting.
As long as it comes with a snacking session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh.
That was appropriate.
All right, so let's, let's.
Cause I thanked today.
Um. With the idea that this is getting closer, let's take some time to digest it and. Try to get a decent. Again, you know, here's. What my thinking is, I want something, you don't have to agree on it. And you may not end up agreeing on it, but I just want something that seems to be in the ballpark of a discussion. To open up a public hearing and try to get through it in reasonable. Quick time, right, I mean, if, you know, if we're here and here. It it's, a public hearing is gonna be a waste of time, and it's certainly not gonna go quickly. So I'm just trying to find something that.
Well, we have to send something to the select board, right, we have to send a document to the select.
Well, I think, you know. Correct, well, I think you don't have to, but I think, I think you have to at least describe what you're doing, but sending a document is certainly helpful because then they can see what is being considered, but. So I think if we can try to. Get a decent working document. For the next meeting and then open up the public hearing after that and see where it goes and. The best we got at this point.
So we'll do some comments to you.
Correct.
I win.
Whenever.
February.
I'm gonna say tomorrow. It took you twenty-three minutes to write it, I think I gave it at least an hour to figure it out.
February twenty-eighth.
Sure.
Got it.
Would I be able to see those?
Yeah, we can, no, I mean, I, it's, let's. Yeah, yeah, get me stuff and we'll. Try to work through it, and I'll, we, I'll talk to folks in the meantime. All right, what do we have next? Let's wrap this.
Good news, next.
Something's about to make his.
Good news.
Famous.
We have very good news, right, Mr. Planner? Would you like a good chair?
Master Plan Advisory Committee.
Master Plan Advisory Committee update, Mr. Goddard. Go for it.
The planning, planning commission has awarded to Thomas Southwick a twenty thousand dollar district local technical assistance grant. For phase two. Uh, the implementation component. Um, interestingly enough, that money needs to be expended in this calendar year, so.
Calendar year?
Yes.
Okay.
So uh, we will be looking to, by the planning commission to ramp up their involvement and staff and whatever else to make sure that.
So the other thing is, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission submitted a agreement. To the town of Southwick, where with a detached scope of services. And the agreement has been signed by their executive director, so it awaits. Select board action, so hopefully March will start. The process. We will start it in March. And our next meeting of the advisory committee is the third of March. And one of the challenging items on that agenda will be to look over. Survey questions. Because one of the early steps is to put out a public survey.
Survey.
See what people are interested in.
Sounds like a game show. What do they want Southwood to look like in twenty forty?
Short-term rental subcommittee update, Dick?
I'm here, still, um, we had a quick meeting, Randy is chair, I'm vice chair. We're trying to get a handle on, uh, let's define what they call a short term. There's one question, and we, at this point, have a little response from people in town, so it's sort of disappointing. Sure, if we do something, they'll complain. And um. John's got the meeting, challenge our next meeting, um. It's like a month out.
Correct, a month from the previous.
But um, we're hoping, you know, cause John published it, I believe, and we didn't get much response from that, so we're hoping we can. Get some feedback from people, cause whatever we do, they won't like it.
What you did, I, 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 my memory is that there was a story in the Westfield, or in the Mass Live, right, Westfield News, didn't Peter do a. Story on.
Yeah.
Short-term rentals.
Front page.
That may get you some, a little bit more input.
So, yeah, um, you know, and there again, do we address issues that short-term rentals at, down by the lakes versus. Grandville Road, I mean, you know, I mean, different parts of town, do we treat them all the same or? And what issues, um. I was reading down here in Florida, they have a situation where. If the police are called to a short-term rental and issue a summons for something. The homeowner gets a five hundred dollar fine. Which will make the homeowner more aware of who he's renting to. We think down by the lakes is probably more younger people for, for party scene. I've been told there's a family in Southwick that rents out a house that they used to own, and they just rent it to another family and everything's fine, so. You know, gotta sort of classify what we're, what we're trying to do here. And, you know, it's, it's gonna take a little while. Some people. Want the thing done by the town meeting, it's never gonna happen, so we told you that and they weren't too happy with that, but.
Yeah, no, that's not happening.
No, nothing's gonna happen.
Three, ten, three years.
Yeah, right, I think we have time. All right, um, follow up on the bicycle rack bylaw, um. Couple things on that, one is, they're doing one in town hall, right, um. Two is. They're looking into whether. Um, any of the ARPA funds can be used for that in some way. I, I, my quick look on it is they can. Um. And a heck of a lot of money, um, to get some bike racks on College Highway, right?
The research I've done on them, they range anywhere from a couple hundred bucks to fifteen hundred bucks.
Right.
Depends on what you get.
So putting out some grants for some of the businesses and put those in, I think it's.
Cause I looked around, there are a few in town already.
Yep.
Are there any on the rail trail?
No. Unless you're uh at uh Red's Cafe. Yeah, they might have one at Red's Cafe.
I can't remember if they. Do or not. I mean.
Yeah, Red's Cafe has them alongside the building.
I thought so, yeah.
Um, the other thing that I was thinking was whether, and we don't have to do it tonight, obviously, since it's late, but. Um, whether to incorporate that in some way into the design guidelines handbook. Um, because that applies to the business zone, which is a good majority of College Highway, right? Um, and so if you put that in there as a, you know, whatever you wanna put it, but. A guideline for, yeah, um, that, that maybe that's something that at least gets. Part of the discussion when you're dealing with a renovation or whatever on College Highway, and that makes for it going forward. Um, so these are all more long-term solutions, but at least ways that.
You got to, you know, look at it when you're living in different buildings so close together, you can't make everybody have to get one every time you go to the store.
No, but.
There's three, you know, that's kinda.
But you should, I mean, and if, if there are funds available, maybe we should talk about whether there are. You know, from a planning standpoint, there are locations that make sense to kind of put them. You know, um.
If this young guy wants to do a good service, a good line for him would be to look into those grants you're talking about. And to go to folks like that on the, the mall where, where uh, say Napper is and, and the Village Pizza. Where you got corners of the lot that I never use and say, listen, we can get a grant to put a thing here, can we? And then let them work it out that way, instead of trying to come up with a bylaw or an ordinance.
No, no, we're not, I don't think we're, I, I mean, I think.
That's going good for what's in existence, but going forward, do we want? If a new business opens up and they're contiguous line to the rail trail, we would want to encourage those new businesses to. Provide accessibility to those.
Right. I mean, I think that's, that's not gonna happen for this round of bylaws, but you know, it's something to talk about, but I think this at least can cover College Highway. And, you know, at least becomes a, something you can, you can rest. A decision on and say, hey, in the bylines, we'd like you to put this in there, we think it's useful. All things, because there's not a bike rack within. It's not a.
You got, the gentleman up here that's building the, the complex, about the town line. Multiple, multiple buildings. Now somewhere inside there, one inside there would be a nice thing to say, could you, could you put one in your complex here somewhere? And I'm sure, you know, being, it's, it's a, not a very expensive item, he would go, yeah, we could, we could accommodate that.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, and, and, you know, I think with that. It may be useful to see what's going in there for, right, and see, see whether that's a useful thing to have there. Um, but probably, I mean, I think he's talking about playing retail.
Guys riding bikes from ten years old to a hundred and ten, these guys have evolved. But it's nice to be able to leave it to a point where first can we suggest that they put one in from the table? When they're building these big places before we go.
Right, and I, my understanding is that the ARPA funds are, it's in the decision-making process, I don't think the. I don't think the uh final rule goes into effect, maybe it's already in effect, I can't remember, but I think there's an April. Timeframe of when, I don't know if it's just, just funds or. You know, final rule goes into effect, I forget which it is, but it's, it's not for another month or, you know, two, um, so. But I think that's the conversation to have now is whether those ARPA funds, the Southwood has, can. All piece of that and, and give some money to various businesses to put that in. Um, all right.
Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has a Valley Bikes. Program too, and I don't know if you pass that along to the young fellow, but.
I'm sure it is, it wouldn't hurt for him to call those folks, cause there's a whole system and network in. In all the more urban areas where there's. More people.
There are more bikers that bike through our town than any urban area. Right now, that I've got, they flock by my house.
Those are the racer guys, yeah.
They, they racer guys, and apparently they, they just do it for fun. And then they put, they park their cars down at the Southwood Inn and they drive, they ride their bikes all the way up to the Grandville store and they go all the way back.
Those are bikes of the west.
All right, show me how big it is.
Anyway, Valley Bikes.
Gregor.
Gregor, how are we doing?
That's right, we just held it a, held this a, it was a good table.
Yep.
We knew they're doing their work, if they have something that's germane to our discussion, they'll bring it forward.
All right, twelve seven minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps make the motion to approve the minutes of December seventh.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Sorry, Jessica.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Doug Singer, aye.
And it's a, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Okay, um, twelve twenty-one minutes, do I hear a motion?
No. You have to correctly spell um Mr. Ecclestone's name and a few spots there and under the seven thirty P M.
With that correction, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Dave Spina, second.
Dave Spina, second.
David Spina.
All right.
Way to go, Dave.
Good.
Hey, do what I can.
Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Doug Singer, aye.
David Spina, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Port and I.
Okay.
We'll continue at uh. Two sets uh per meeting to try to, as we pick up the backlog.
Are we that perfect?
Well, we just finished up December.
December.
We're not talking about September and July anymore, so we can play.
We're almost in the twenties. We're almost.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Marcus Phelps will second the motion to close.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.